All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting Monday, June 5th. Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glab?
Here.
Alderman McClatchy?
Here.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Here.
Alderman Strack?
Here.
Alderman Cook?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in God's hands. All right, does everyone have seats? Just want to make sure. All right. First item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Patrick Devine for his service as alderman of Ward 6 from March 20th, 2017 until March 30th, April 30th of 2023. I'm going to go ahead and step up to the front. Patrick Devine, do you mind stepping up?
Patrick Devine served as alderman, like I said, six years. Did an amazing job, great support in what we've done over the past six years since I've been elected as mayor. And I'd like to read this proclamation as follows. Whereas Patrick Devine had his appointment to Ward 6 alderman confirmed on March 6th, 2017, and was sworn in on March 20th, 2017. And whereas Patrick Devine has concluded six years as alderman of Ward 6, and whereas he has served the council with purpose, dedication, devotion, and integrity, and has acted in all matters before the council with the welfare of the city uppermost in his mind. And whereas he has served with dedication, devotion, and integrity, and can look delighted like a clown, back in pride of his contributions and accomplishments while serving in the city council, now therefore being proclaimed that the city council of the city of McHenry go on record as recognizing the many contributions and dedication of Patrick Devine in expressing his appreciation and gratitude on behalf of citizens of McHenry.
Do you want to read a picture?
If you were a hairball longer, this would be a lot nicer.
Thank you. Thank you. The public comment is for items not on the agenda this evening. So as we get to those items, you will have the opportunity to speak on public comment. So once again, this is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. So I'd like to open it up for public comment. It looks like everyone that signed in is items that are on the agenda. Is there anyone here for items that are not on the agenda this evening? All right. See none? Moving on to consent agenda items 6A through 6H. I am looking for a motion to approve. Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we approve the consent agenda, and if there's nothing pulled.
All right. Second?
No. I'm looking to pull.
Nothing to pull? Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Item, question, comments regarding these items?
Yeah.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I asked, you didn't ask, I wanted to pull A, please.
A? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other items?
I'd like to pull, uh, let's see. C, please.
Okay. Any others? All right. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve 6B and D through H. Alderman McClatchy? Okay. Second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Monty?
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. First item pulled was 6A, accept and authorize execution of a proposal from GovHRUSA to assist the city administrator recruitment and selection process. We do have Director Campanella here with Mark Peterson from HRGov. So Alderman Glab, go ahead.
Yeah, just basically, I wanted to pull it because I want to vote on it separately. You know, I was against the policy, and I'm basically not necessarily thrilled with the idea of going out to somebody that wants to go nationwide. We had an incident years and years ago that we looked at a new police chief. We got him way out of town, and it was not a very good fit. Very good officer, but again, for our community, was not a good fit, and it didn't last very long, the relationship. And I just feel that I'd like to keep the search a lot closer. I'd like somebody that's familiar with the area and the county. My opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Santee?
I have no comments. I would just like to make a motion to approve consent agenda item 6A as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Miller?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Alderman Santee?
No, I look forward to working with GovHRUSA in regards to recruitment. It's a very vital position. Looking at the background and reading up on this, I believe we're very fortunate in regards to, we have a gentleman that will be working with us, the consultant, Mark Peterson, from central Illinois and also this area. And their background is just impeccable in regards to recruitment for these types of positions in the government environment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
And I would just second that, that I think we're very fortunate to have a company on board, Mr. Peterson. Thank you. When you read the proposal and the resume, I don't think there's a community that he hasn't touched. So I thought that was pretty impressive, that not only do you understand the local issues that we have, but you understand the local needs. So you, this is not your first rodeo, and I was grateful when I saw that in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda was pulled by Alderman Cook versus 6C, is to waive the competitive bidding process and accept a proposal from Associated Electric Contractors of Woodstock in the amount of $119,346 for the replacement and relocation of the motor control center, 9MCC. Alderman Cook, go ahead.
Why is there not a competitive bidding? Couldn't, could not the city get three other ones? You know, three other bids for it? I just, I'm, I'm just against
Sure.
Uh, open bids, or having an open bid.
Okay.
Yes. So this, this is a similar award as the millstream lift station project, which was awarded just a couple meetings ago. And again, our challenge has been these projects that are a blend of SCADA integration work, which is more like engineering and professional services, which is actually not a low bid item. It's a professional service, so it's actually a quality-based selection process. When you blend that with an electrical construction project, in the breakdown of line items that we have on this project, it's very, very difficult to prepare a competitive set of plans and run an open bidding process. So that millstream project that we awarded last year, we prepared a contract proposal in-house, publicly advertised it, and received no bids for it. And then we actually went about hiring an engineer, and the engineering expenses were almost as much as what the construction project was going to be. So this is, this is kind of a unique blend of work and niche of work that we're in. And it makes it, it makes it challenging. So there are two proposals. We have one proposal with Associated Electrical acting as the general, and then we have one with advanced automation and controls acting as a general. So we have multiple proposals. We did not run a publicly advertised bidding process for these struggles that we've had with this type of procurement in the past. We have also reached out to firms who have these SCADA integration services departments. A lot of them actually would recommend going with a quality-based selection process, professional services, where you completely don't consider costs with the integration work. Most of, most of the firms that do that sort of work recommend that. So this, this is what we believe is the best way and the most cost-effective way to perform this, this blend of scope.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments regarding this item? Looking for a motion and a second to approve. Alderman Strack?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Once again, any discussion? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Ann Campanella from our HR director, if you could go ahead and introduce Mark Peterson from HRGov.
So hello. I just want to take the time to introduce Mr. Mark Peterson to our council and our directors. And if you want to say if you were.
I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I'm going to be your best friend, your new best friend over the next four months. And we'll be spending a fair amount of time together. I look forward to it. You've got a beautiful community, and I am very optimistic that we will be able to attract and ultimately present to you some outstanding candidates for this very, very important position. So thank you for selecting GovHR, and again, it is my pleasure to be here, and I sincerely look forward to getting to know all of you and working very closely with you on what is likely to be one of the more important decisions that you as a body make, and that is the selection and appointment of a new city administrator to fill the large shoes left by Mr. Moorefield. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ann. All right. Moving on to individual action items. 7A is a use variation and zoning variations for 1407 North Court Street. Looking for a motion to approve an ordinance granting a use variation and zoning variations for the property located at 1407 North Court Street. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion to approve the variations as presented.
Second? Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, I would second it.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by council? See none? I'm going to open up to public comment for this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding 7A? See none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7B, is a use variation and zoning variations of 1507 North Green Street. Motion to approve an ordinance granting a use variation and zoning variations for the property located at 1507 North Green Street. Looking for a motion and a second to approve. Alderman Strack?
I'll make the motion for 7B.
Thank you. Second? Alderwoman Bassie?
Bassie.
Sorry. No, I was, oh, go ahead. Yeah. Right. I'm like going with one.
I second it.
All right. Thank you. Discussion by council? See none? Opening up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7C, is a various zoning text amendments keeping of apiaries, automotive sales and towing business in I-1 industrial district. I'm looking for a motion to approve an ordinance granting various text amendments to the McHenry zoning ordinance related to the keeping of apiaries on residential lots and allowing automotive sales and towing business in the I-1 industrial district. Director Polarecki, you want to go ahead and introduce this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so basically, this is just cleaning up of our ordinances. By policy, we have always allowed apiaries or bees. We were approached by a resident who felt more comfortable keeping these if we had an ordinance, so we researched, found Crystal Lake's ordinance to be pretty in line with what most beekeepers consider good regulations, so we did just steal that from them. The other two items were allowing automotive sales and towing businesses in an I-1 industrial district. It's very basic changes to our zoning ordinance. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Ross. At this time, looking for a motion to approve 7C as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve 7C, the ordinance granting variation zoning text amendments to the city of McHenry and zoning ordinances as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Alderman Cook, for a second? Discussion by city council? I'm opening up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding 7C? I see none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7D, is a Class A liquor license to Canaritos, is that right? Okay. Thank you. Bar and Grill at 1228 North Green Street. Looking for a motion to approve a Class A liquor license to Canaritos Bar and Grill located at 1228 North Green Street, subject to the issuance of an occupancy and if approved, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Alcoholic Liquor, Section 6, License, Classification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation of Number of Licenses. The chief, myself, and Monty has met with the applicants. We put in this one, and you'll see that it's an issuance of an occupancy. So that is, you know, once we get the occup, once they receive the occupancy from our community development department, then we'll go ahead and issue the liquor license. And the applicants are here, so if there's questions for the applicants, they can answer those for you. All right? I am looking for a motion to approve 7D as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, I would move to approve the Class A liquor license for Canaritos Bar and Grill with the amendment attached.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Strack?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion, comments by council? Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Do we have any idea when you will be opening?
You want to step up to the podium?
If you could step up to the microphone, please.
Good afternoon. Well, God willing, around August 15th, projecting.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and wish you good luck. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant while she's up here? All right. Thank you. You may be seated. Appreciate it. All right. I'm, any other questions, comments by council? Opening up for public comment regarding 7D. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 7E, is a Class A liquor license to McHenry Steckey LLC, 3918 Main Street. A Class A liquor license to McHenry Steckey LLC located at 3918 Main Street, and if approved, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Alcoholic Liquor, Section 6, License, Classification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation of Number of Licenses. Once again, the chief, Monty, and myself met with the applicant, Pete. If you have any questions, Pete is a well-known person from Alex's and McHenry, so if you, he's very recognizable, so he's out there. So if you have any questions or comments for him, he will answer those for you. At this time, looking for a motion to approve 7E. Alderman Santee?
No, I will make the motion to approve 7E, McHenry Steckey liquor license as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Alderwoman Bassie?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? No? Opening up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Pete, would you like to say anything?
Nope.
Okay. I kind of figured, but I just, all right. Coming back to council, any questions, comments? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is video gaming license to McHenry Steckey LLC, 3918 Main Street. Subject to the approval of the previous agenda item, which was approved, consideration of a gaming license to McHenry Steckey LLC located at 3918 Main Street. Subject to the execution of a video gaming development agreement, I am looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Santee?
I will make that motion to approve the video gaming license for McHenry Steckey as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? See none? I'm opening up for public comment. Anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding 7F? See none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7G, is a Class A liquor license for Leona's Pizzeria Express of McHenry LLC, 3102 West Illinois Route 120. I'm looking for a motion to approve a Class A liquor license to Leona's Pizzeria Express of McHenry LLC located at 3102 West Illinois Route 120, subject to the issuance of an occupancy, and if approved, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Alcoholic Liquor, Section 6, License, Classification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation of Number of Licenses. At this time, looking for a motion. And I did meet with the applicant. Is he here? Maybe not. But I did meet with them, also with the chief and Monty, so looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Strack?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 7G as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council on this item? Go ahead.
Is the owner here? Do we have a tentative opening date?
I don't see him.
You don't see him?
No. The opening date, I believe when we met, it was, I don't want to throw a number out. I want to say less than three months.
All right. No, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Open up for public comment regarding this item, 7G? No? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 7H, a video gaming license to Leona's Pizzeria Express of McHenry LLC, 3102 West Illinois Route 20. Subject to the approval of a previous agenda item, which was approved, consideration of a gaming license to Leona's Pizzeria Express of McHenry LLC, subject to the execution of a video gaming development agreement. I am looking for a motion and a second to approve. Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, I would move that we approve H as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Cook?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? See none? Opening up for public comment regarding 7H. Anyone like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Monty, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassie?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. I would like to publicly thank Canaritos Steckey LLC, and then Leona's Pizzeria for investing in the city of McHenry. Look forward to all three of those businesses filling vacancies in the city of McHenry. Just shows that how much hard work our staff, our council, and myself puts into the city of McHenry and starts filling these buildings. So thank you all for your support on that. Next item on the agenda, if you were here for any previous items, you're more than welcome to leave. I know some of you might not want to leave, and you, you might want to leave. But next item on it is Super Aggregates gravel pit, north of Illinois Route 120 and east of Chapel Hill Road, as presented. Normally, I ask for a motion to approve. I'm going to hold off on the motion to approve. There is a lot of public here, according to the signup sheet, that would like to speak on behalf of the public. We do ask that the public keep your comments to a maximum of two minutes. We'll have a timer up here. We also ask if you are repeating the person before you, please refrain from just keep repeating the same things. If it's about sound, we got it. If it's about whatever the case may be, please let's keep them... I don't feel like being here until 3:00 AM. So, let's just keep the comments brief and let's get through the public comment portion. So, at this point, I will go ahead and ask the City Council if they would like to ask any questions to staff or the applicant. Jack Pease is here with his team. How you doing, Jack? Pete, would you like to...
Well, the staff can make a presentation or they can have Jack make the presentation. There doesn't have to be a presentation because we've got it all in writing.
Right.
Totally up to the City Council.
Would you like to do that?
Just real brief, yeah. I'm not going to get long-winded here. I just want to kind of read what they're going for. Council has seen this project multiple occasions minus, I think, a couple of council members that are new. But we have filled them in with this project. So, this is going on almost four years. So, it's nice to finally come to tonight. The petitioner, Land Reserves LLC, is requesting approval of the following zoning items on an approximately 110-acre tract of land located in unincorporated McHenry County prior to the annexation in order to accommodate the operation of gravel pit. Number one, preliminary and final plat of McHenry Lakes Business Park Subdivision. Number two, zoning map amendment for Lot 1 to C5 Highway Commercial District. Number three, zoning map amendments Lot to Lot 2 to RS1 Low Density Single Family Residential District within agricultural mining overlay. Number four, conditional use permit for earth extraction processing, asphalt, concrete recycling and outdoor storage for the construction of a lake. And number five, zoning variations. Berm height of 6'8" in lieu of the 10-foot required by ordinance. Mining operations other than crushing, setback distance between 30 and 50 feet in lieu of the 100 required by ordinance. Crushing activities setback distance of 712 in lieu of the required 750 required by ordinance. And then hours of operation. We want an exemption to operate outside of ordinance requirements to meet contractual obligations from time to time. So, that is what Land Reserves LLC is asking for tonight, obviously with an annexation. So, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions.
Appreciate it, Russ. At this time, I would like to offer the opportunity for the Council to ask any questions to the applicant. So, at this time, anyone have any questions? Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions and then I've got some comments later. Mr. Pease, why didn't you go to the county for this?
Jack, can you hit the center button there?
Sorry.
It'll turn red. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Pease, my son Tori Pease. Three and a half years ago approximately, we came to the City Council to see if the city had an interest. Since we are a resident of the city of McHenry, I live on Green Street, as well as I have several commercial buildings with tenants in it, with offices and office warehouses, about 120 different businesses in town. I didn't want to be right at the edge of town and feel like I was avoiding the city. So, I came and asked the City Council if they'd be interested in proceeding down this path. And the council members at that time were interested in that. So, we've worked for over three, three and a half years now with the staff, city attorney, city engineers, the county highway department, Illinois Department of Transportation, trying to get over all the hurdles to come to this day today. And the... We've got some new council members that have never seen our presentation or haven't been given one. And I feel like rather than take everybody's time tonight, I'd still like that opportunity to introduce the project and address the concerns which I'll try to do tonight. But I think if people have not been to see the actual operation of what we do, you really can't make an appropriate decision unless you see for yourself. And I think up till now, only two of the council members have. So, at the end of my brief presentation or questions and answers, I'm going to make that point. We also have been working with the neighbors, very much so just in the last three or four days, trying to address the concerns and make the adjacent owners happy with the compromises that they came to be looking for. Relocating the berms, giving them use of some of our land. And we're continuing to meet with them over the next week or two. So, that might be another reason to take a little, one more step, a little more time to make the final decision. I can, if you let me have about 10 minutes, I could probably address some of the things that would come up in questions. If I could take a 10 minutes if you'd like.
Can I follow up my question?
Yeah, go ahead. Hold on one second. Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Before you get into that, my question was why not go to the county? Mr. Pease? Did you ever go to the county for this project?
Oh, the county and we have a very ongoing relationship. First of all, this project isn't just gravel. That's a very short-term thing, about less than one-tenth the size of what you saw at the west pit with Chuck Miller. That was 120 acres, no, 1,200 acres. This is 100 acres. And obviously, again, only one-tenth the size of the Peterson-Dalen operation next door. So, keep that perspective in mind, which means it's really more about the other two uses. The first immediate use is all the highway frontage on 120 is going to immediately be developed and built as A-quality retail tenants in multi-tenant buildings, very similar to what I have where Tim and Patty's Restaurant is just west of the hospital. And we have a building at the corner of Bow Valley Road and Crystal Lake Blacktop, next to the Trio Gas Station. All those buildings look identical because we own them. And we want to do a building like that on 120 for retail customers. So, from the Shell gas station going east, that would be the very first thing that would occur. And we are anxious to get to the end product. And the end product is a residential subdivision on two lakes. And that's really where we make most of our living as a developer. We've developed Ivanhoe Estates on Route 60, the nicest development in Motherline. We've developed Jonathan Knowles on Route 41 in Wadsworth, nicest one in Wadsworth. Eagle Ridge on 173 east of Antioch. Dutch Creek Estates just north here in Johnsburg. So, we love to build upper-end homes. The best-selling lots are always these lake lots. So, we are very anxious to get the lakes in and put the Mandarin Estate road in for the upper-end subdivision and leave you in less than 20 years with the nicest residential community in McHenry.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but so you did go to the county?
Yes, with the county.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just stay on that subject, sorry. We go to the county two days from now. We have a meeting at 6 o'clock. It's called the Gravel Advisory Committee. We have other operations that we've completed already in the county, always very successful. The end products are beautiful residential estates on lakes. We have ongoing operations where if you called up the county staff, you'd find out that we never, ever get any complaints. We get along with our neighbors. And at the gravel advisory committee, they have their staff there, the representative of the Sheriff's Department and usually a couple of county board members. And we work together because the county ordinance and comprehensive plan strongly encourages the access to sand and gravel, knowing what a vital product it is. So, they understand our crisis we're in right now. As the two major operations on Route 31 by Algonquin Hansen and Lafarge ran out of material this past year and closed. We are, from eight years ago, McHenry County had 31 operating sand and gravel operations and right now has 11. So, and add to that, what if we just have a couple more? Well, a year ago in June, we had some, a labor strike that was only against two of those remaining 11. And when those two closed down for six weeks, six and a half weeks, every single state and county and most village projects came to a stop because there was not enough aggregates. Even after they opened back up, you can go into a lot of operations unless you almost have a reservation to get that 3/4-inch chips or 3/4-inch stone, there isn't any available for somebody wanting to buy it. And to... You need to realize that unless you live in a straw hut and not have a car because you can't drive on a road, you can't even walk on a sidewalk, you're relying on sand and gravel just as much as you are groceries every day. And, you know, we don't make it for ourselves to take home. We make it for the public that anxiously awaits and needs asphalt, concrete, concrete pipe, manholes, blocks, paving brick. Even go to a Home Depot and buy a bag of Sackcrete or Quickcrete. And that Quickcrete bag is our sand and stone inside the bag with cement. And so, the county realizes that more so than on a local level. So, your question maybe is heading in that same direction. And we were happy to do that at the beginning. The county's always received us very positively. We have a good, ongoing relationship. But I just didn't want to have McHenry feel like, why didn't I ask them? Our taxes on those buildings as well as the end houses, as well as the sales tax, along with the royalties over the duration of the next 20 years would be well over $2 million. And I'd rather see McHenry fix up Veterans Park one more... It's fixed up perfect already, but I'd rather see you do another project in town that we can all enjoy rather than the county. So, I came to the city to be a good city contributor and resident and keep my business in town.
All right. Go ahead, Alderman Bassie.
Hello, Mr. Pease. I'm one of the newbies here. So, you had said short-term. Are you identifying short-term as 20 years for the excavation only?
Well, when I started three and a half years ago, I was calling this a 20-year duration to sell 6, 6 and 1/2 million ton. What has happened in three and a half to four years is our operations that we have elsewhere have almost doubled their annual sales as other pits have closed. So, that would mean duration is probably going to be significantly less than that, probably more in the 10 to 12, 13-year range. So, simple supply and demand would make it go quicker, which means we get to our end product that much sooner.
So, what would you consider your minimum years and your maximum?
Minimum and maximum years, what would you consider?
Of excavation. I'm only concerned about excavation.
Well, if you look in the brochure of the presentation book, it's phased so that we finish, go to each phase, complete it, finish it, shape the back, the slopes to the lake, seed them and have the lake done. And then keep moving to the next section so that even at six or seven years, you see half done and half still farm field. So, you really don't see us working at any one spot like, you know, other operations tend to do. We kind of restore as we go. We showed you lots of pictures of that. And we have a plan in there that shows you how we would phase it as we would move around. And we intentionally left the phase along Velmar Estates to the east for very last, so it wouldn't happen till the very last year. And we would be done all in that same year, kind of no more of an inconvenience there because we would have a berm that would be on one side. And, you know, there was a time where Velmar Estates had mass earthwork, detention basins, road construction and homes being built. Well, the neighbor next door, which was a bunch of soybeans growing, had no problem with the neighbor developing for a few months. And I'm just, you know, I've been trying to work with our neighbors there so they can understand we'll keep away from them till the very end. In the very last year, we'll get done, take the berm down. They want it to be a temporary berm. That way, their homes would actually have a view of a lake then. And then we would grade a gentle slope from the back of their lot, about 110 feet to the edge of the lake. And we've even offered, and we're trying to work out the terms right now with them, to give them that property, meaning the full width of their lot by that distance to the lake. Because to us, the homeowners on the other side of the lake are just going to look at association-owned property on the back slope around the back of the lake where somebody might as well own it and enjoy it. And it didn't cost us any more to even give it away. It would just be association common space.
Okay.
So, we think we're going to get to that point. And that's why I was suggesting that a one-month pause would let us get that concluded with our adjoining neighbors.
So, please help me out and understand. Are you saying you would have all the excavation completed, best case 12 years? Or I know it's on a rolling. I understand that. But I'm saying as a whole?
Yes.
The excavation, how many years? Is 12 years the best and 20 is the worst?
Even with their high interest rates right now, the demand because of lack of other competition at the time would allow us to finish up in that approximate 10 to 13-year range. And if I showed you our sales at Woodstock and Lily Pond Road and Marengo, you know, similar, close by, if I showed you my sales from 2019 and from 2022, you're going to see we doubled our sales every place. And that's despite COVID and despite interest rates climbing. So, it's just there's an ever constant demand. And I know the number. It is right around 10 million ton that comes from McHenry County. And it used to come from 31 places, now it has to come from 11. So, that'll allow us to definitely get done in your 13 years or less timeframe. We do have to complete in stages, though. We have made a commitment to McHenry County Highway Department, who wants to improve Chapel Hill Road to a four to five-line road sometime in the near future. They came to us wanting to know if we would convey to them about 2.7 acres of land for 65 feet more right away. We've worked that deal out and we gave them a nice gift. And we told them that if they don't put the road in for another two years, we're going to be able to grant them a storm drain adjustment on about three acres of, the first three acres of our lake that's done. We're going to allow them to have a drain adjustment on. So, there's storm detention that comes off of the new road from Lincoln Road all the way to 120. That water would be conveyed through storm pipes into our lake as a gift from us to the county taxpayers. So, you know, we're here to do some good for the public in many, many ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Strack?
Mr. Pease, just wondering, will you be crushing on this site?
Yes, to a minor degree. And it's probably one of the main reasons we need to have a few more people go on a little tour for about an hour. The reserve we have there, if you read our mining, our boring reports, we're with an outwash gravel area of fine layers, horizontal layers of fine sand and gravel. And if you took a pail of it and did a gradation, you'd find out that there's less than 1% or 2% bigger than 2-inch, which needs crushing. So, there's so little that needs crushing, it ends up being similar to our operation at Belvedere or our operation in Marengo. So, if I could just get a couple more people to go to Marengo, stand right up next to the plant and you can hear the water spraying, washing, you can see the sand screw dewatering. You can hear all these other things because you're standing right next to them. And when you ask me, is there a crusher here? I'm going to point to the 100 horsepower impactor way up in the air about 45 feet that you can't even hear from on the ground. And you need to see that with your own eyes to believe it, come to your own conclusion. But I need a fair opportunity to take some people there so they can convey to the entire council, you know, what it's really like. So, we stop thinking there's a boogeyman in the closet.
I've been to the Belvedere facility, so I have visited that facility with you. So, I understand what that was.
Oh, thank you.
My question is, is there an ability to crush that off-site? Do you need to have that crusher on-site?
We don't even need a primary crusher. This is similar to other operations we have where we just put a grizzly there, which is just bars. And it might reject one truckload a day of cobbles. We can take those cobbles, even sell them to landscapers as cobbles. Or if we get to the point where there's 40 loads there after two months, we can send them to Volvo to get crushed. It's not enough to have the equipment there.
Got it.
So, thanks to the fact that it's fine there, and everybody would wonder, why is it fine there but coarse right a half mile away? Somehow the glacier just treated things differently. And if you're a geologist, you'll understand why. It pushed things into piles with big stones and boulders. And then it rained for 1,000 years and ran out. So, a mile or two away from it, where it stopped pushing, you get outwash. And the further you get from the outwash, the bigger stone, you know, got left behind and the fine material ended up there. We would rather have coarse material. It's worth more money. But we're only blessed with fine sand and gravel there, which makes it the sound, two things. It makes the sound insignificant because you're crushing with such a low-capacity crusher. And everything you're crushing is wet because you're doing it simultaneous to washing. So, it's wet stones about that big that go into the small impactor and...
Thank you. One last question. The berm height, the request to lower the berm height. Help me understand the reason for the lowered berm height along the perimeter of this and some of the setbacks that you're requesting the variance for.
Just about all the perimeter locations where the berm would go are about 25 feet on average, plus or minus four, five feet above the floor, above the water table. Instead of setting up and doing any processing on the top where you would have a line of sight that would take a bigger berm, we're going to come and make a four-acre hole first, get one or two feet above water table, put equipment there. And then the very highest tip of a conveyor there is what the exhibit shows in the book for the line of sight. And it only takes that six or eight foot tall for the line of sight. You know, if you're standing at five and a half foot tall and the berm is seven and a half, by the time you get 1,000 feet away, you're looking at 80 feet up in the air, not, you know, not just 20 or 30. And...
That answers it. Thank you, Mr. Pease.
Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Jack, Mr. Pease, I appreciate your time. I spent with you probably about three years ago at your office. And I have driven past a couple of your operations, a little upon one, most recently. And, uh, I, I have driven past a couple of your operations, a little upon one, um, most recently. Um, and I thank you and I thank Bill for giving me the time. I think he's your real estate guy. Is it Bill or Phil?
Phil.
Bill. Uh, Phil. Uh, Phil, sorry. Okay. Appreciate, uh, appreciate your time showing me, you know, your projects, what you, what you've done with your pits after, uh, completion. Uh, one of the statements when we presented this from Director Palarecki was a, um, uh, you know, to be contractually, uh, set to certain times. And I'm reading the minutes and I'm looking at the minutes right now from the zoning meeting. Uh, and the last statement was with the option of adjusting your times, but getting some kind of verification of those hours needing more time because of business, you know, is stronger, what have you. If, if you need, if, if we have some set times here and you need a different time slot to complete a large project of yours somewhere, um, what type of timeframe can you give us ahead of schedule to notify the city, to notify residents of a special project that you might need to operate later hours?
Okay, there are the standard hours that are in there. And the paragraph that would allow for a rare emergency occasion has occurred three times in the last 40 years.
But you want it in there?
Yes, and, and if I can briefly tell you the three. When they drilled the hole in downtown Chicago through the tunnel, I had to fill the sandbags up with sand in a couple hours. So we had the trucks on the way with the sand. That was in the middle of the night. Uh, when we were building the toll road on I-90 and, uh, Curran got behind schedule and T-5 wanted to pour on Sunday, we poured concrete on Sunday out of three plants. That was the second time. Uh, the third time was when we had a flood along the Fox River and, uh, we were trying to supply the township garages with, with sand to fill up sandbags. And we worked on a Sunday then to bring sand for a flood. Those are the only three times we ever asked. And every time we called up the sheriff's department, we would call up your police department and your, and your city administrator and let them know the nature.
Well, how, how much?
And it's not to produce.
No, no, no.
It was just to load it, load the trucks.
It's, it's a time element here because I, I, I'm trying to understand. It's, it's a little bit tough to understand that. How much time would, would that project, the, the, the tunnel, what have you? How much time did you get in advance before then having to notify whomever your local, you know, pit that you were going to work out of to get that extra time in? You know, were you notified a week in advance, a month in advance? And how, how far?
John Kelly called me up and wanted to know if two hours from then I could have 10 loads of sand down in the city.
Okay. So you're, yeah, and so then how do you, how do you notify a city? How do you notify the people around the pit that now suddenly they're going to be, you know, operating from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM instead of 6:00 AM to 6:00, 6:00 PM?
First, first of all, it's, we don't go start producing in the middle of the night. It's just to send one person there to load the 10 trucks that came to take the material to the emergency. We, we have the material already. It's just getting to somebody that needs it bad enough. We don't want to get up in the middle of the night to have to go load somebody's truck. And we only do it when it's a public, public emergency.
Well, I'm...
And it's so, it's really so seldom.
Okay. I, I, I know, you told me three times in 40 years. So, okay, I understand. No, I'm, and it's, I'm just trying to, no, I'm just trying to understand it. And, you know, by all means, please, folks, please, just, let's try to be professional as we can. Uh, I just want to try to understand as much as I can on this because it is a large project. It is a large piece of land. Um, and...
If you wanted to exclude that, that'd be no problem because we have other sources nearby. We, we don't have to do it out of this location.
I, I, I understand it, Jack. Um, you've, you've devoted one-on-one time with me on two occasions, one, the second one being today, and I, and I do appreciate that. Because I want to understand this and I want to see if there's any chance that, you know, this could fit within the city of McHenry. I just don't see where, uh, there's just a lot of things that need to be answered. And, uh, um, you know, I appreciate the time that you gave me earlier today. And I do want to, uh, listen to what the citizens have to say and understanding that, um, I believe it's, uh, that's all county, right? The, uh, Valmar Estates is county, correct? It's not Lake More? Okay, county. Uh, just want to see and, and understand, you know, their concerns also. Um, and could be a cut to the chase statement here, everyone is that Mr. Pease has done this for many years. He's successful at it. He does it very well. You know, I definitely have some concerns, but he's done this business and he's done it for a long period of time. At some point, whether it's, this is just my opinion here, uh, whether it's the city of McHenry or the county of McHenry, um, there's a very good chance that that land will be mined. And, um, so I'm trying to approach it that way, knowing that we want to try to be as, as, as best neighbors as possible for each other. And I'll leave it at that because I know there'll be some comments from, uh, uh, from the audience and, and comments from other elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Alden McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, my biggest concern about this is the traffic, all the trucks. He said, uh, 50 in, so 50 truckloads, that means 100 in and out. So my question is, did you get approval from IDOT to put this on 120?
We've worked with IDOT for three years straight. Did a required traffic study that led to engineering of the road. They really didn't like the first engineer, so we hired Manhard who completed it. Uh, we do have our permit now, our permit's ready. Uh, it's waiting for our zoning before we walk in and take it out. But we, we could walk in and put our bond up and do it. Uh, the, uh, it requires a right turn lane heading westbound so that, that vehicle could slow down to enter. And at the same time, it, on the eastbound, uh, it, it has a center left turn lane to get that vehicle out of the traffic while it's waiting to make its left turn. Uh, keep in mind, we're at the very, very east limit of McHenry because we have operation, a facility in Richmond, a facility in Woodstock, a facility in, uh, uh, Marengo. The aggregates got left behind kind of along the Fox River Valley. Those locations are more in the western portion of that band of, of aggregate. Uh, so we, we, we would never take this material and head west with it. We have material in Woodstock and Richmond that comes to McHenry from the north and west. This material is, is going to be mainly heading to Lake County where they have no sand and gravel. And, uh, you, you see that every day of your life here in McHenry. Those trucks that leave the West Pit hardly ever go to Woodstock. I mean, I mean, like, one out of 100 might, the other 99 all head straight east in that same path.
All right. So you do have a permit from IDOT approving this egress on 120?
We have the permit?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so IDOT correspondence, they send everything, uh, that they copy the developer on through, through City Hall. So we do have correspondence with them. The developer or IDOT's asking for our sign off on it as a city, but it's not annexed in to the city of McHenry. So me signing that does no good until we decide if we're going to annex it and allow them to operate a mining. Uh, so IDOT is, has approved and the paperwork is sitting on somebody's desk waiting for our signature.
Thank you, Director.
Any other questions, comments? Aldone Miller, go ahead.
Mr. Pease, thank you for being here. When you opened your conversation, you said you've had a lot of conversations with those residents in the last few days. Could you just summate what you've had in conversation? Because clearly that won't be in our packet. We have no idea what you've talked about with them most recently. Could you tell us what those conversations have been?
We were approached by them from the adjacent landowners in Valmar Estates, which is five parcels of five homes. Uh, two of those five, uh, have talked to us and they have a desire to have the berm located further west. And we've discussed and agreed on what would be a good location and height. They've also asked that it be temporary and not permanent because they are looking forward to having a view of an open space in, in a lake. Uh, and those were their actual requests. I was the one that went out a, a step further and let them know that that's actually my association owned property that'll be on the backside of a lake that doesn't make the lot across the, you know, 900 feet away pay any more because the association owns, if anything, they're going to look at it. There's another acre of land we got to pay somebody to mow. So, so everyone's happy if we give that to them. So we have no problem giving them these pieces of property. And we don't mind carving them out. If you've got a 135 foot lot, we'll just extend those lines exactly even to the shore of the lake. And add to it in our covenants, the riparian rights that we give to our own homeowners, they would share in those same riparian rights, meaning you can fish, you can have a rowboat, you can swim, you can have a kayak or, you know, whatever we put in the covenants for the riparian rights, which probably will definitely not include mo, uh, gas powered bo, uh, motors, but will include, uh, maybe, you know, small electric motors and, and rowing or sailing little, little vessels. So we, since this only started on Friday, this past Friday, uh, is the biggest reason I'm asking that we postpone a vote until we can meet with those, those owners and, and work, work something out in writing. Uh, as well as I, I, I strongly urge the council members that have not gone on a little tour to go on the quickest little tour with Tori and I so we could show them, that's the impact crusher, that's a flow of 420 tons per hour, that's a ratio of only one or 2% over inch and a half stone. So they can actually see and, see and believe what I'm saying. So it's just not a story, but they can see and hear it and touch it. And, uh, then I also, if I do have that opportunity to take two or four people on a tour, you know, one or two at a time, uh, I've got a list of our other current neighbors, our other current village administrators and, uh, uh, I'd like with phone numbers, names and phone numbers. I, I, I'd like to have them leave with that. And, and we've given that list already to you before in our booklet. Uh, and, and I strongly encourage that if we can get along with, with a phone call to verify. And there's like 40 some people there, so obviously they're not rehearsed. You can call up one or two or four and, and find out very quickly that we're good neighbors, do everything we promise and, uh, you know, get some credibility that, that there's nothing to fear. So, uh, you know, I, again, requesting those two opportunities, uh, to resolve the final, your, your issues before a final vote. You got to keep in mind one thing too, is everyone says, why don't you just go four miles west of town where there's just farms? We've already dug a test hole on every single one of those. We have to go where the gravel is. Unfortunately, most of it's built on top of, by homes in Algonquin, Barrington Hills, Carpenter'sville. And, and there's only a few of these spots left in between. And, and there's a reason why Peterson was there, Thalen's there now, Berger's across the street where Chuck Miller was. It's where the gravel is. Uh, we, we can't make it go someplace else. Uh, but we can also be the best neighbors that we ever have been. And, and that's really been achieved by, uh, with the county gravel advisor group. Uh, I think everyone there, the operators, including Thalen and Meyer and everybody, along with all the county officials, work together hand in hand. And, uh, we talk about ways of getting along better with our, our neighbors every single time we meet. And, uh, it, it kind of, as a group, it puts pressure from one to the other and, you know, if you can, you know, I, I'm sure that they'd even admit that as soon as I plant a lot of nice pine trees, they go by some pine trees and they plant pine trees too, which is good. We all try to do, outdo each other and, and be good neighbors.
So, Jack Pease, let me understand this. So you, you would like to postpone the vote? Um, and we can go ahead and discuss this, uh, as a council. I would like to give everyone that's out here, obviously, the opportunity to speak. Um, and then when it comes back, it would probably be coming back on July 17th. If that's the case, we'd ask that the people that speak tonight do not speak again on behalf of the same item. Um, so if this is your, if you want to have a public comment, this is the time to do it. Um, and then if I can get support by council to go ahead and, um, postpone this item to July 17th, then we would, uh, definitely do that. And I urge the council, uh, definitely.
Excuse me, Mayor, but I haven't had my time to...
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just, you, you'll have your time, they'll have their time and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to continue it like just no vote. Okay?
That's fine. Can I point out just one little quick thing?
Sure.
When we do the recess, I know that property values are going to be concerned. And I found it so easy to understand when I just went to Zillow and without cherry picking. Anybody could hire a real, realtor...
I would ask that you keep professional, okay? Thank you.
Anybody could hire a realtor to cherry pick to make their point. With Zillow, you press recent sales all and you'll get all the sales that occurred in any one of the four subdivisions that surround the West Pit. And then if you see 14 sales occurred in one over the last two years and four of them front on the gravel pit and 10 don't, and take an average of the ones that, in each group, all four subdivisions, you'll see when you do it yourself, average about $30,000 more per home on, that front on the gravel pit. And I, I was surprised. I was hoping the answer would be they're about the same. Why are they consistently more? And all of a sudden I realized, uh, your, your backyard could either back up to another barking dog, other kids playing, somebody else that's got the lights on late at night that shine in your bedroom window. These people look out at a lake or an o, open field and have peace and tranquility all the time because they only mined that 10 acres behind their house one year and then they were gone forever and it was restored. So they end up, they may have complained at one time, but in the end, they actually enjoy the open space being their neighbor.
Thank you. Aldone Bassi?
Um, did Zillow factor in that this was mining property? And there was going to be excavation for 13 years for the property values?
You have to help me. She has to Zillow factor, then that's going to be mining for 13 years. Huh? It must be talking about in between.
Right. You'd mentioned that you looked at Zillow. But did Zillow factor in that that property surrounding these homes is going to be a mine with excavation and crushing?
Well, I'm using the examples of the existing operations.
And I understand that. So I guess the real question is, what benefits do these homeowners have having a gravel pit in their backyard?
Okay. Uh, they don't have the benefit of it being a soybean field forever. But that's not fair to say that once, 50 years ago, there were both farms and whoever gets to build homes first wins and the other person never can. That, that's not a fair thing for, uh, one side to say to the other. Uh, and I think they need to be a little patient, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that we can't have a temporary berm that's far enough away that we can't mine there until the very last year. And when we do mine there, that we get it done in two, three months straight and hurry up and have it restored down to the lake. There's lots of things we can do by just wanting to work with them and be a good neighbor so that it's a, a very innocent process. No more of an inconvenience than somebody building roads and detention basins next door to you when they develop any farm field into a residential subdivision. So, uh, we will, I, I promise you, we will be a good neighbor from start to finish. And in the years that we're a thousand feet away, we're a thousand feet away. And when we go on this tour, you're going to realize when you stand a thousand feet away, you, you don't hear or see that there's a gravel pit a thousand feet away from you. So it's really just that last few months that you take the berm down... So it's really just that last few months that you take the berm down, shape the slopes that you are a minor inconvenience to them, but at that point, you're giving them something that's, that they want, something that's valuable to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Glab, go ahead.
Yeah, first thing is, is you were talking about donating land to the homeowners for larger backyards. Uh, these homeowners are in the county, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then you're going to have part of that property annexed into the city and then you give it to them, then they're going to own property in the city.
That would be cool.
Unless they DNX or else annexed into the city. So has that been even thought about? You know, that, I know it's a minor detail, but it is a detail that needs to be ironed out.
Well, I think at the moment we convey it, we'll make sure that as they're receiving riparian rights and ownership rights, there are also going to be the restrictions that they couldn't build a second house behind, you know, in their backyard on the slope because that's not the theme we're trying to achieve here. We're trying to achieve, their houses being up in unincorporated county with a little bit of city property, a hundred and ten feet, slopes gently down to a lake that isn't a city, that they only have the passive right of using for their yard and beach and mowing lawn.
Right, okay. Uh, another thing is, is you're talking possibly reducing the time of mining to twelve to thirteen years due to the need of gravel at this particular time, the way the industry is going at this time. Like you said, forty, fifty percent more on your other sites that you're moving as far as product. I guess the question I've got is, is will that percentage work here? Or will you be taking the gravel from other locations to finish those projects off sooner, delaying this project?
If we're granted a more restrictive timeframe, we're going to do the logical thing. We're going to pull it from here versus another place to a degree. We're not going to go further out of our way. The reason we have multiple locations is very important to understand. If you, every time you have almost a location, let's say one for every town almost, that means the cartage from that location to the job that occurs there is going to be less than half, maybe even a third, of what it takes to haul it from Marengo to McHenry. Well, a third of the cartage saves that much money, along with saving, only having one-third amount of fuel being burnt and emissions into the air, only one-third of the amount of trucks on the road in total. There may be trucks here, but think of the public, the total, you'll have less trucks. And to give you an example, a year ago, City of Woodstock let out a large contract for fourteen point one million dollars to PLOTE to build a new roundabout on the south side of the square. They were one point one million dollars lower than the second bidder. The second bidder was going to bring the materials from their operation out of Rockford, and that distance to haul that sixty thousand ton of material there would have taken, instead of about five trucks per day that PLOTE used, would have taken twenty-five trucks per day. Would have had that many more trucks going through Woodstock to get their job done. So they saved a ton of truck traffic, saved one point one million dollars by having a local source. So it's a very good thing that we have, it's like, you know, it's nice having a grocery store in every town, it's nice having a gravel pit in every town, it saves everybody money, it keeps traffic down, keeps emissions down in the air.
Okay. Another situation is, that's in the back of my mind, is I think of, many years ago, we took and, we expanded on the Meyer pit as far as crossing over one-twenty, where they actually had the expense of tunneling under one-twenty, got the permission from IDOT and everything else. And then when they got to that side and started mining it, they found that their surveys were not anywhere near what they thought they had as far as the quality of gravel, and there was so much sand. And what was supposed to be a five-year project is still going on, I believe, correct? Uh, what, sixteen, seventeen years later? What's our assurance that, you know, that isn't going to happen there?
There was a reason Chuck sold it when he did.
I mean, if you don't find the type and the quality of gravel, are you going to be looking at the sand to continue mining that? Or are you going to say, okay, let's close it up, let's finish off the project?
If you look in our book, you'll see the, all the borings, we did deep borings and shallow borings. Uh, we know what's there. We've been doing it for a long time, we're absolutely sure. We know just how deep we can go, we know what quality is, we know how long it'll take.
But Jack, I mean, Meyer material wasn't new in the business either, you know, and they took and a lot of expense to go under, you know, tunnel under one-twenty and everything else, yet they were way off as far as what they actually reaped out of there compared to what they thought they'd have. I'm not saying that you aren't doing a better job as far as the survey, but it's possible. You know, surveys are great, engineering is great, but there's always that little factor of the unknown, that you never know what, you know, what could happen. So all I'm saying is, what would happen though, is if that became the same case to where there isn't that much high-quality gravel and let's say sand that we're, you don't need that sand, are we going to be sitting and asking for extensions because we don't need it, the product right now? Or are we going to just finish off the-
No, to the contrary, it would take less time because there's less total tonnage to go after. The lake might be forty acres instead of fifty acres, and we'd just get done two years sooner.
So you'd bite the bullet.
It's less material. We want to get done and out of there because we're a developer, we wear two hats. We have a third hat, we build the custom homes. All those homes at Ivanhoe Country Club. I built all those hundred and forty-eight homes that are along Route sixty. Uh, so we like getting to the next phase where we build homes. Right now, we're up in Lake Geneva, building homes, uh, just off the lake up there, so we, that's still a vital part of our business. So we want to get done because what will happen is, while we're mining, they're going to assess our property higher, we're going to have lots of ongoing costs, and if we don't have enough sales, we lose money every year. So we hurry up and pack up and get out of town, meaning finish our end product that much sooner, even though I assure you, it can't deviate very much because we did so much sampling of the soil.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to open up for public comment. Uh, once again, please keep your comments to a maximum of two minutes. We'd ask that you don't repeat the person before you. And at this time, we'll go ahead and, the first person to come up for public comment would be Terry Luduk. Oh, please stop, please. Maybe you can hit the red, the button right in the middle, the speaker there, you just keep it on. Thank you.
Okay, my first question was going to be, what's it going to do for the City of McHenry? And I knew it was money, but I figured it would be a lot more than two million dollars to destroy our quality of life. Two million seems like hardly anything. You go down one-twenty right now, and the trucks, the gravel trucks, they cut you off, they force you off the road. It's a crapshoot going down one-twenty. My husband's a truck driver, and he says the worst truck drivers out there are the gravel trucks. And then we're going to have them going down Lincoln Road and Chapel Hill. Two of my neighbors have been running, turning onto Chapel Hill. The truck traffic is just going to be ridiculous. And lowering all the standards for them, I mean, the berm heights, the hours, all that, that's just, just ridiculous. And the amount of noise and dust that we're going to be putting up with, with these trucks, added trucks, is just going to make our lives hell, hell. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, next one. Valerie Brixey, did I say that right? Please state your name and address for public record.
Um, I'm Valerie Brixey, seventeen oh six, Vivian Wake Court. I live in Stillings Woods. Nobody has bothered to come over to Stillings Woods and talk to us. You said that you met with some of the homeowners, that never did happen, which is very disappointing. I'm very concerned about the environmental impact, the air pollution, the water pollution, and the noise pollution. This is going to have a very negative effect on our children who attend the middle school and Hilltop School, which is within three miles. And I worry and I'm concerned about health issues down the road of inhaling and breathing all this toxicity from the pit. And it not only affects the children, but the teachers and staff. I moved from Bensonville because of noise pollution, from the airport up to nice, quiet McHenry. It's been a wonderful home, quiet, peaceful, and now I'm facing this noisy environment once again. I'm also, this is going to disrupt our home life as well, I mean, the noise coming through the window is one thing, but-
Thirty seconds left. Just letting you know the time, thirty seconds left.
Okay. I do think home values will plummet, and I'm sure nobody would want to move next to a pit. That is not something that a normal person or family would want to do. I don't think this should be in an established neighborhood with homes, and no matter what you do, you won't be a good neighbor, in my opinion.
Next person, Tim, I don't want to butcher this, Kruzak?
Cruzak.
All right, perfect. If you could just state your name and address for public record, please.
Tim Kruzak, twelve sixteen Palomino, McHenry.
Thank you.
The two-minute drill here, huh? All right, I'm going to test your imagination, all right? See this green? These are all single-family homes, all right? Single-family homes. We've got Valmar Estates here, where more than two people live, by the way. Stillings Woods, we've got all the Chapel Hill Road communities, and coming soon, Redwood. All right? These houses have been here for fifty to eighty years. Some of these homes on Chapel Hill Road were built in the nineteen thirties. You know, this is where we live, this is our homes. All right, now this is, let me see, all right, back up. These are all single-family homes. What does common sense logic tell you belongs here in the middle? All right? Don't answer that yet. This is going to be a little harder to see, I have copies if anybody wants one. These are gravel deposits in the state of Illinois. This map is produced by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Everything blue on here is sand and gravel deposits close to the surface, all right? You notice the northern tier of Illinois is basically solid blue, all right? You can go anywhere in this area and mine sand and gravel. So, you know, nobody would care. You know, who would care if you're up here mining this? But, uh, what's, you know, if you can mine sand and gravel anywhere in the countryside, why are you forcing your way into the middle of residential neighborhoods that have been there for fifty to eighty years? What's the purpose? And by the way, this is where the core stuff is that somebody's looking for, all right? The core sand and gravel. All right, uh-
Thirty seconds.
All right, cut it short. I talked to the groundwater expert at the McHenry County, and he says, we're going to have a definite problem with our wells, we're going to have to mine them. I'm going to not give you the details on that. The bottom line here is, we built our homes believing we'd be able to live in peace like anybody else in McHenry County, you know? So what crime did we commit? You know, why are we going to be punished with a gravel pit in our backyard? Right? This is not the nineteen fifties anymore. Gravel pits aren't the only show in town. We need to stop putting gravel pits in residential neighborhoods now, and you folks have a golden opportunity to be the trailblazer and stop it, all right? Don't slap these people in the face. Do the right thing, vote no on this. Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and address for public record, please.
Paul Gerns, fourteen fourteen Appaloosa Trail in Valmar Estates. I guess after following everything you've already heard and not, in the spirit of not repeating things, I would just ask that you all consider that this is in the middle of a residential district, surrounded by homes. I have no doubt that Mr. Pease's operation is efficient and quiet compared to other gravel pits, but it's a gravel pit nonetheless. I mean, we've probably all done work here in our homes, dug up gravel for putting in fences, there's inherent noise and dust, no matter what precautions that you do take. It's also a little bit concerning, the inconsistent answers coming from Mr. Pease. You've heard it today from a number of aldermen asking questions, can't get direct answers. I forget who asked a question about crushing. If you look at the minutes from the zoning meeting, Mr. Pease said the only reason that they were going to do any crushing was a convenience to contractors that may haul some stuff in to get crushed, and it was not a major thing. Today, we hear a different story. We hear something about size differences and some things may need to be crushed, completely different story. The last thing, I'll echo what somebody else said, you said you spoke to neighbors in there. I live right there, in that neighborhood. I have not heard any conversation from anybody about any concessions or anything. So there may be one or two people that got a hold of them, but it's the best kept secret. So I'm just asking to please consider where this is located. I know we need sand and gravel, but not in the middle of a residential area. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Kathleen Schluter, did I say that right? Please state your name and address for public record.
My name's Kathleen Schluter. I live at eighteen oh six Mason Cortez Drive in the McHenry and Door Lake Moore address. I was here last time, and I asked everybody to please look at the Google Maps and see what Thalen's gravel pit looks like right now. Because what you're trying to decide is, will this piece of property look like that for the next twenty years? And we can hedge it and say, oh, it might be thirteen, but I doubt it. And I truly doubt it. In the packet that you guys have for today's meeting, you have the staff analysis. On pages one seventy-six and one seventy-seven, they say, one of the statements is, placing a gravel pit next to existing single-family land use is not an ideal scenario. And it should be avoided, if possible, due to the negative impacts on property values. Another part says, the proposed gravel operation is not in compliance with the future land use map recommendation. These are serious points, and they're in there from your staff analysis. And the only reason you guys would deviate from this is for money. And like somebody else pointed out, two million's not enough. And hopefully, you would decide that twenty million was not enough. There's one more part that says, given the proximity of operations to single-family residential, staff recommends denial of the hours of operation variance request. They should also be recommending denial of the berms being lowered. In order to have a variance, the petitioner has to show hardship, not an inconvenience. There's no hardship listed or argued for why the berms have to be lower, why the- why the, um, why the hours have to be given, given longer, or given just, you know, gentleman's agreement and we'll only use it when we need to. That's, that is not okay. I would implore that you guys really consider better uses for that piece of property. Because I know there are better uses. And, and you know it too, because you said you were anxious to get to the end product. Do it now. Do the end product now.
Mary Vander...
I signed by mistake.
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you.
You have to talk.
You have to talk now. Alright, uh, that's, that's all who signed up. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a public comment? Sir, please step up. Once again, please state your name and address for public record.
My name's Dave Harmon. I live at twenty-three oh one, or, excuse me, twenty-three oh one Country Lane, Eastwood Manor, McHenry. Just had one question. Um, I read that, uh, Mr. Pease is currently in violation of a stormwater agreement with the city for an asphalt pile on one-twenty by the shell. Is that true?
Uh, we're not here to respond. Ross, do you wanna go ahead and respond? You would grab that mic like you wanted to respond to that, go ahead.
Yeah, no, yeah, I can respond to that. Um, there is currently, it's not in the city though, 'cause we don't have jurisdiction over the property. Is that, uh, McHenry County Stormwater Division does have an open violation against, uh, the property owners, yes.
I guess that's that pile of asphalt.
Correct.
It's been sitting there for how many months? And we can trust you? Thank you.
Uh, next person. Sir, please step up. Once again, please state your name and address for public record.
Yeah, Mike Alba, twelve seventeen Palomino Drive, McHenry. So, you know, I'm, I'm the closest thing to this gravel pit, or to the back. And, uh, my well's there, my pool's there. Um, I don't need a lake, but, you know, it'd be a good idea. If he wants to, you know, build this lake now, we'd, we'd be more than happy, you know? But, uh, um, my question, or my comment to you guys is that I asked him last time, um, will this go twenty years? He can't tell you twenty years, 'cause if the economy goes really bad and nobody builds houses, how are you gonna sell your gravel? You know, roads are changing, stuff's changing. Uh, he, he wasn't able to answer it. He danced, he got around it. Um, the other thing is that, uh, um, this berm, I have four kids. You know, he wants to go fifty away from my backyard? That's crazy. I'm just telling you, I've walked it, you know? And I invite you guys to come to my house and listen to Thielen at six in the morning and how quiet it is. But it's not quiet. It's a freaking, sounds like a thunderstorm. And, you know, it does. And we're okay. I want people to work. We, we, you know, we're all working people. We want, you know, we, we need people to work. We need people to build roads, whatever we gotta do. Um, but we gotta live with another gravel pit? You guys are, you guys are just crazy if you let this go, because, you know, it's, it's, we already lived with it, you know? And I don't know, Lake Moore, how they passed it, or how that happened. But for us to get another one, it's not gonna be quiet. You know, I'm not gonna have an eagle sitting above my pool and that, you know, not hear anything, or whatever he says. Um, you know, like I said, and to go fifty feet away from my house, please come over and, you know, walk it and see how far it's gonna be and how dangerous it's gonna be. I mean, we already have Thielen behind us. And it's, it's crazy how that's there. And if you Google it, you, I don't wanna say it again, but if you Google it, I mean, it's getting bigger, you know? And I have, I talked to them a little bit, uh, um, 'cause I've been getting into this. I called Don Tocero, called a couple other people. And Thielen says, "We don't need another gravel pit." I mean, he, I asked him to come out and say, "Hey, do we really need this gravel pit to support these neighborhoods and stuff?" Obviously, he's not gonna come out, but, you know, he, he doesn't. It's huge. I don't, he's, you know, how many, how much, bigger than he is? Five, ten times bigger than he'll be? You know, do we really need it? No. It's, he's right. There's gravel there, sand there, whatever. We gotta get it, but what it's gonna do to us is not fair. And, and you're, you're right. Maybe McHenry County will pass it. And you gotta think about that. But is it right for you guys to pass it? No. You know, let us fight it out. Let, let's see what McHenry County does. But it shouldn't be you guys that, that let this go through. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person. Anyone else like to make a comment? Please state your name and address for public record.
Hi, Robin Sures, fifteen oh six Arabian Spur. Um, I just wanna read a couple paragraphs to you about this, uh, dust. It's, the disease is called celiacosis. It says, "Celiacosis is a long-term lung disease caused by inhaling large amounts of crystalline, uh, silice dust, usually over many years. Silica is a substance naturally found in a certain type of stone, rock, sand, and clay." People also ask, "What are the three types of this celiacosis? Chronic celiacosis, exposure to silica dust for more than ten years. Accelerated celiacosis, exposure to silica dust for three to ten years. Acute celiacosis, develops within weeks or months of exposure to silica dust." What I'm concerned about is the last part. It says, "Can you heal this celiacosis? There is no cure for celiacosis. And once the damage is done, it cannot be reversed. Treatment is focused on slowing down the progression of the disease and relieving symptoms only." What I'm worried about is, we have the elementary school, we have the Presbyterian church with a daycare, we have the movie theater where families go in the evening to watch the cartoons, what have you. It's open seven days a week in the summer. Problem with this dust? They do it all day long? Well, guess what? It stays in the air for twelve hours when they're finished for the day. So that means we have the dust all day, and we have the dust twelve hours in the evening as well. So when our families are at the movie theater, they're breathing that dust those twelve hours while they're watching cartoons. That's all I have to say, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please step up. Please state your name and address for public record.
Uh, my name's Anthony Sures. I live at fifteen oh six Arabian Spur. I'd just say I'm a retired Army officer, Deputy Sheriff, retired probation officer. This just comes down to one thing. Either you vote for public greed, I mean, corporate greed, or private health. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a pu- public comment? Sir, please step up. Please state your name and address for public record.
Uh, Jeff Jacobs, twenty-three twelve Manor Lane, McHenry, Illinois. Um, I live in Eastwood Manor, Settlers Woods, across Chapel Hill. And, uh, I'm an electrician, I've worked at plenty of gravel pits. And this magical, quiet crusher that he's describing doesn't exist. Uh, what he's talking about is complete salesmanship and doesn't describe gravel pit at all. Um, and I think everyone knows that, you know? Clearly, what he's describing is something else, you know? Uh, it's gonna be a gravel pit. It's gonna be a loud, noisy, dusty gravel pit like every gravel pit is. Every one, every single one. And it's gonna smack that in the middle of everyone's neighborhood. And I'd like to respectfully ask you guys, if this was in your backyard, would you vote for it? 'Cause, you know, he knows how to go on the computer and look at Zillow and trying to tell us our property values are gonna go up? That's kinda crazy. I mean, it's pretty poor salesmanship in general. It's a gravel pit. It's gonna be a loud, noisy gravel pit in the middle of a bunch of residences, a preschool, a middle school, grade school. And that's all there is to it. Uh, it doesn't belong there. And, um, you know, he can sell it any way he wants, but we all know. And, and is any of this in writing? He just tells you guys numbers that he keeps lowering as this meeting goes on. And, and, and you just, there's no contracts, there's no, oh, you know, this is how many years it's gonna be, this is how many years it's probably gonna be. He just gets to say whatever he wants to say.
That's...
There's nothing in writing.
There's an agreement, but...
There is.
Thirty seconds.
There is, with a, with a twelve, a twelve-year time limit?
No, I'm saying there's a greater timing.
The economy's gonna be, uh, crashing pretty soon.
It's not like we wouldn't do anything without a contract, so, come on.
Hmm?
It's not like we'd do anything without a contract. Let's, let's be real.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll get, thank you for educating me. I am real. I just don't understand the process. But I appreciate you educating me. Um, yeah, obviously, you're predicting the economy's just gonna boom forever, huh?
Public work.
Oh, man.
Hey, sit here. We're not, don't attack the apple panel, please.
That's time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, anyways, it's not. So, you know, he can tell us all, you know, all he wants. Then all of a sudden, it went from mining the last part at, near Valmar in those people's backyards, a year, and then you changed it to two to three months towards the end? Uh, you know, uh, he's just a salesman selling a regular little gravel pit in the middle of a residential area. You know, and McHenry's our town, even though we're not in the city limits. And we, we love it, and we shop here, we live here, we spend money here. It's our home. It's unimaginable that, you know, this, this type of area and you guys would just annex it up like this and, uh, turn it into what it is. 'Cause, uh, like I said, if it was one of your guys' backyards, you wouldn't be voting for it. Nobody would. Nobody in their right mind would vote for that in their backyard. Nobody. And, uh, nobody'd vote for it anywhere near their property. And, uh, that's all there is to it, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Ma'am, sure. Please state your name and address.
My name is Debbie Hoffman. My husband is Roy. And we moved to Eastwood Manor in nineteen sixty-eight. We're there fifty-five years. We own a small parcel behind us on, uh, a small pond that is in the Settlers Woods. And I need someone to explain to me, 'cause when we moved there, there was nothing there. Just the, the initial Eastwood Manor, and there were woods. And I love all the neighbors there. We have a great community. But I wanna know why a five-lane highway on Chapel Hill Road? I clean up that road because it's in honor of my mother, who served in the Army. And I know the accidents that happen on that road now, coming out of our subdivision, because I pick up the car parts and put them in a pile. My husband and I do. We've done that for, uh, seventeen years. And, uh, I, I don't understand a five-lane road there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ross, go ahead.
Yeah, ma'am, if you want, if you wanna get ahold of us tomorrow or leave Monty your phone number, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and explain that eastern bypass that, that they're referring to with the five-lane highway. That's, that's at the county level, that's not the city. But I can give you some information on it if you, if you're...
So Monty's the clerk right here.
Monty, if you wanna leave your phone number for Monty, I'll, I'll get a call to you tomorrow.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Alright. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to City Council. Any other questions, comments, uh, by City Council at this time? Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, just a, a couple comments. We're growing, and we're doing a lot of good things. And these people don't live in the city, but they, they realize it. I wanna see McHenry grow up and out, not down. This crater's gonna be there forever. Our kids, 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 kids are gonna either go by it or fly over it. In real estate, they say, "Location, location, location." This is the worst place we can think of to put a gravel pit. And it's gonna be even worse trying to sell or, or buy a house in that area. So I'm, you know, it, let's, you, you said we're gonna make a motion or something to table this?
Yeah, in a second we will.
What's, what, what's that based on?
To postpone the item. So there is a few council members that I have been in touch with about postponing the item, uh, just to, uh, have time to visit, have time to, um, discuss with staff, with Jack Pease about this project as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Santi?
Yep. Thank you, Alderman McClatchy, for the, um, that question, the input and then the questions, 'cause, um, yes, it's, it's something that we'll, we'll be looking at probably in the four weeks or right around four weeks, I think, two more council meetings from, from today. And, you know, his, he had a very good question about why, because I'm one of these members here that is still questioning whether, you know, this should become, uh, a pit or not. So I definitely don't have a horse in a race today, except to say it's, it's uncomfortable to me because I need more, more questions answered, and I need, need more negotiations with Mr. Pease. That being said, I wanna thank you all for coming here and giving us your comments. We appreciate them, and, you know, we're definitely listening to you and, you know, putting your statements into what we need to do in the near future in this discussion with Mr. Pease. I, I, you've got to understand, I know I made this statement earlier, is that Mr. Pease purchased a piece of property three, three and a half years ago. Uh, he's been doing this type of business for many, many years. And he's, he's been doing a, a very good job. I mean, it's, it's rewarded him in what he's attained in life. And you've got to applaud the man for that. Um, there's, there's a, um, you know, i- is it, you know, is it the best place for a pit? I don't know where, 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 where good places are for a gravel pit, but it's a, it's a needed product, it's a needed product in, in our environment today. And the one term, back to Alderman McClatchy regards to why, is that I can say it in one word, it's control. Do we wanna, does a city wanna control this piece of property? Or do we wanna allow it to fall in the hands of the county? I am not going to ask Mr. Pease a question right now, uh, in, in a, in, you know, in a game of poker, but he has a very good hand here. And you've got to understand that, because he's worked with the county. He wants to work with the city, okay? Um, I don't fault him for running his business and making himself profitable, because he's definitely got some options here. And we now have to sit down and try to figure out what's best for the city as a whole with this property. And if that decision comes down to us saying, "No thanks, Mr. Pease. We do not wanna do business with you," that does not, it does not, you know, end the potential of the mining of that land. Because he's, he's done this biz, he's, he's done this business with our communities. You have one already there next to you in Lake Moore. So, you know, with, with a different company. But, um, I, I, I just, as calmly as possible, I just wanna make sure you understand that, is that, um, you know, he can easily make a step and go into, you know, working with the county on this, uh, uh, on this piece of land. So, control is that one item that I think we definitely have to take a hard look at. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, sir? Sir? Please leave. Thank you. Next person, uh, any council members? Alderman Bassi?
Well, I do wanna thank all of you for coming. I know this is extremely emotional for you, and I wanna thank you for sharing with us your concerns and your fears, so, and making us aware of where you are and everything. So, thank you so much.
Any other council members? Alderman Glabgar, go ahead.
Yeah. One of the things I wanna bring up, uh, which has already been brought up, is the fact that, uh, there are different options for Mr. Pease. Uh, to me, the question more than anything else is, is who does control and monitor what goes on at those, at that gravel... Uh, to me, the question more than anything else is, is who does control and monitor what goes on at those, at that gravel pit? That gravel pit's gonna go, whether it goes in the county, or whether it comes to McHenry. Uh, would you rather have somebody all the way out in Woodstock, uh, monitoring it? Or would you rather have somebody local like McHenry that could be watching it on almost a, a week-to-week basis? Now, the thing is, is more than anything else, is you hear comments, you got, I got emails, I'm sure everybody else did, is as far as, oh, don't vote for this, and da-da-da-da-da. Try to make your comments positive as well as negative, okay? Because if it, if, if you're trying to make it negative so that we vote against it, it's one thing, but if it does go through, don't you wanna have the positive comments in there also, that if it does go through, that you'd like to see X, Y, and Z? Rather than just, oh, we don't want it, and then if it does get approved, then you don't have anything else to say. So, so say everything that if, you know, look at it both sides. You know, we don't want it, but if it does come through, this is our concern. And, and that's, that's what we need to hear. We really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments, questions? All right, so at this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to postpone, uh, this item, which is seven I, to July seventeenth at seven PM. Alderman Strack for a motion?
So moved.
Second. Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Once again, I would like to personally, uh, thank everyone for coming, uh, and, uh, trying your best to be professional. We obviously wanna be, uh, you know, we wanna partner with you and, and Mr. Pease, or whatever the case may be, but we do, do wanna make sure that we do this in a, a professional manner, um, and hopefully, uh, you know, July seventeenth, we find out one way or the other where this goes. So, uh, thank you all for coming. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, uh, Mr. Pease, uh, thank you both very much for, uh, coming.
Thank you. I'll save my rebuttal for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, Kensington Drive resurfacing, uh, which is seven J. Uh, that's a discussion and motion by council in regarding completion of Kensington Drive resurfacing project. Uh, I am, uh, looking for Director Strange to present this item.
Sure, thank you, mayor. Uh, so, per the direction of the city council at the last council meeting, we, we took a look at completing Kensington Drive on its own this year, uh, this fiscal year, essentially, with remaining balances, um, that we have outstanding, um, from the road program, given that we've come in, you know, a little bit under budget. Uh, we have explored that option. Uh, we are somewhat limited in doing it this year. It's, I won't say it's not possible, but, uh, there would be some challenges because the only funding, based upon the funding breakdown for the program, would be to do with MFT funds. There's a two-month, uh, review process for the MFT contracts. There's an advertisement process. Uh, so, based upon, you know, so backing into dates, that would put us at awarding a contract, um, probably in October, if things go well, um, based upon the history we have with IDOT. Uh, we did ask if we were able to add it to the existing work that is currently under contract. Uh, that was not an original location of the contract. IDOT did not consider, uh, that addition germane to the existing contract, so that was not allowed. We did specifically ask that question, though. Uh, so really, our options are either to complete Kensington, uh, and they're listed at the end of the supplement, they're either to complete Kensington this year and risk running out of time, complete it, uh, with next year's road program and add it to the, the program, it's not currently recommended for next year's program, or to just let the schedule play out and have it completed during the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six road program. Uh, for a little bit of context, uh, all the roads that are getting recommended in the next supplement for the twenty-four program have, uh, ranking, a rating of thirty or lower, uh, the higher the number, the better ranking, the lower number, the lower, the, uh, worse ranking. And then Kensington is rated at a thirty-two, which is why it's just outside of the twenty-four program and in the twenty-five program. Preliminary estimate, if we were to perform the work by itself this year, is about three hundred forty-three thousand dollars. And we're seeking direction.
Thank you, Troy. Three forty-three.
Three hundred forty-three?
Yep. Thank you, Troy. Appreciate it. Uh, discussion, uh, by council on this item? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, mayor, I'm the one that's been bringing it up. I've been bringing it up for seven years about the condition of that road. Um, analyzing, uh, the survey that was done in twenty nineteen, I take a look, and one of the things that disturbed me was the fact that, yes, you look at pavement conditions and everything else, but what you also don't take into account enough is the fact that, uh, Kensington supposedly is a, uh, i- it's a collector's street, and we're doing side streets, you know, just plain residential streets. Uh, this, you know, this street is grouped in the one to five hundred, uh, classification of, of vehicles that, that move through there. And maybe they're classified because maybe they're four hundred and sixty-five, uh, vehicles versus a residential area that only has fifty. But they're grouped together. And the thing is, is we can't ignore the, um, the collector's streets to do the residential. I mean, and even in my ward, uh, that connects to this, there's a residential street that got done. Uh, I don't, looking at the pavement, it wasn't as bad as Kensington. And yet, it, it bears nowhere near the traffic that this street does. Now, because it's outside firm, and again, outside firm, um, takes and classifies, uh, the surface base or what have you, as far as being needier, we've gotta look at what's best to, um, to service the most residents. And the collector's streets in the city, I mean, you take a look at Kensington, and you've got people from Water's Edge that use it, you've got people from, uh, all through, uh, Fox Ridge that use it, you've got people that even come across, uh, the bridge and, and cut through Kensington. Plus, you've got the school. And, and you know, that's another, another good question, is, is, let's go back to the Dartmoor traffic light. Uh, when, uh, staff told me years back that, well, it didn't meet the criteria because of the, the amount of counts weren't there. And I asked for them to go back, because they took it when, in the vacation time, when there were no kids in school, and everybody was out to vacation. They went back and took it. It not only met the, uh, the, what was it, three, uh, counts that they needed, and they wound up with five, because of that. And it could be the timing of factor of when some of these streets are taken, as far as the amount of traffic that's actually on them. You know, is, was it taken when, when the kids are in school? Because that's a big factor, because Kensington does get a ton of traffic from the school kids. Now, I can understand. My reservation's about doing it now, after talking to Troy a couple weeks back, and saying that it can't be done until October, as much as I'd like to see it done this year, um, I'm willing to compromise to twenty twenty-four, to next year. The main reason is, is because I don't want it to get rushed through and not be done as well as the rest of the streets that are done this year. I'd be happy to, to see it at least be pushed up to next year. I'd be willing to compromise with that and see that a street that is done, uh, as well as any of the other streets that are being done in the city of McHenry. And that's where I stand right now.
Okay. Alderman Strack?
Uh, here. Got it, got it, I'm good. I think we all have streets in our wards that need to be addressed. I have major thoroughfares in a neighborhood, two major thoroughfares in a neighborhood, that the condition of those streets are, have, have deteriorated since the twenty nineteen report, probably beyond repair. And I think those streets could likely be resurfaced in advance as well. We went through this last year in the same, similar conversation for other streets last year. Alderman Glab stated in our last meeting that when we finished the comp plan that we were spending so much money for, that we needed to follow that plan. And it's my opinion that we continue to follow the plan and our streets plan and get all of the roads addressed, in everyone's ward as quickly as possible. So, I'd like to also throw a motion out to deny, uh, this motion on resurfacing Kensington Drive next year and leaving it on the plan for twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Uh, there's a motion on the table.
No, we gotta go to a motion, sorry. Um, so we have a motion on the floor by Alderman Strack, uh, for a denial, uh, so this is, uh, seven J. Uh, motion to deny, and which would be voting yes to, uh, vote denying this, uh, this item, so just so you know, so there's no confusion. Looking for a second. Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, discussion by?
We have public input?
Yeah, yeah, you'll, yeah, you will, absolutely, hold on one second. Uh, public, I mean, uh, council, any questions, comments? Alderman Bassi?
Um, first of all, Troy, thank you for spending time with me last week, so I could get a little more educated on all of this. Um, yes, the study was done September eleventh of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I do understand, looking at it, that Kensington does fall into the very bad. I, after I left you, I went and I visited with the high school and had a very nice conversation with the superintendent. Um, what we're not taking into account is we have additional parking, roughly three hundred, and that does include handicapped. And West Campus, as I've always called it, it's now called Upper Campus, um, has gone from a four-year school to a three-year school, meaning we've got sophomore, junior, seniors. Most juniors and seniors are drivers, or at least on the verge of becoming drivers. They're all very inexperienced drivers, and I'm sure a great many of them are now using Kensington as a cutoff or a quick way to get to Ledge and Lakes, to get to, um, oh, my sister lives there, I don't even know.
What?
Sue, it's your, your area. Thank you very much. So it is being used a lot more. So I agree completely with Alderman Glab that we do need to put it on the twenty twenty-four, um, list. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Cook?
Uh, I've drove down that road. Uh, yeah, it's bad. I mean, um, for cul-de-sacs to be done and not have a main road done, um, I don't think it'll last another year. I don't think it'll last a winter. You're gonna have potholes in that thing and all that, just from the freezing and thawing of this coming winter. Not that I'm wanting winter, but I mean, I've seen roads like that, and it tears it up bad. And if the kids are using it and all that, it's only gonna get worse. It might make it to next year. That's my personal opinion. I would leave it as the twenty-four season. I, I mean, I would do it next year, definitely. Thank you.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you. Um, my question actually is to Director Strange. Uh, obviously, I support the motion, cause I like the process that we've created. I think it's logical and makes sense. But is there something you can do from your department to give it a little more longevity? Have you spent time on Kensington?
Yep. So, our stance typically, once pretty much all of these roads get to the point where they're only a year or two out, is not to sink the costs into doing saw cuts and excavation-type repairs. We have a limited number of hours, uh, with our maintenance crews to perform in-house patching. So typically, we, we do, once they're a year or two out, we stick with pothole patching. If something breaks open to open gravel, you know, maybe we will do a, a repair that requires some sort of removal. But once they're that close to being resurfaced, we try not to sink costs into them because there really aren't any returns, and we have kind of limited resources as far as the in-house maintenance, and we can self-perform.
Thank you. And the only other question I had, um, Alderman Glab and I spoke earlier today, and he had questioned the ratings and the rankings. Um, to my recollection, the company that did the mapping basically created that rating system based on some measurement of cracks and spider webs and more things than I probably don't know about asphalt. Um, is that a correct statement?
No. The s- the system was created by the Army Corps of Engineers and has been in, uh, in application for several decades. So it's, it's basically, it takes four or five, um, core indicators of pavement distress, and basically gives, uh, a rating for the whole segment, um, what percentage of the segment has that specific types of distress. Uh, and then it weights them and gives you a zero through ninety-nine ranking. But, um, it's, um, it's not something that this consulting firm, uh, uh, created on their own. It's, it's an industry standard rating system. There's a couple other systems, um, but this, this one, like I said, uh, Army Corps of Engineers in several decades. So it is, it is a proven system for pavement management.
Perfect. Uh, my, my hope was it wasn't something internal, that, yeah.
No. No, and frankly, we, we used to try and self-perform, uh, road rating ourselves. Uh, the process was subjective at best and didn't lead any sort of consistency or transparency. Uh, this, this, uh, process we have now is both. Um, I do understand, uh, the concerns about as far as weighting of, based upon functional classification and traffic. Uh, if council were interested in us looking at the methodology, uh, in a future year and kind of reforming the program to factor that in, uh, that is something that we could look at, but it would, it would take some consideration. It wouldn't be something we would just do kind of on an anecdotal basis.
Go ahead, Sue.
In your opinion, as an engineer, how often should we repeat this study?
We're actually recommending that we have it performed, um, next year. Some of our, uh, road program, there's several funds now that we are combining to make up our road program budget. Uh, one of the, the contractual, uh, line items that we use for the road resurfacing program, I would recommend setting aside a small portion to redo the study next year. And that's, um, that's something I was gonna discuss with the next supplement.
Is it the same cost, or around the same cost? Do you know? Any idea?
We're, we're estimating right now, still in the neighborhood of fifty. Uh, I just had a conversation with the firm that did it, uh, a few weeks ago, and, uh, assuming that, uh, that, uh, council is in concurrence with revisiting the study, uh, we'd be reaching out to them, developing a proper budget number. I would recommend working with the same firm. There's only so many firms that do it. I would recommend some consistency in the methodology. Um, so that, that would be our recommendation.
Thank you.
Alderman Glab, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna mention the fact that, uh, nobody knows our roads better than people that live there, that are local. Nobody knows the use of our roads better than, than we do. You know, when you're talking outside firm, you're talking about fifty thousand dollars that we spent in twenty nineteen, and now you're talking about another fifty thousand. And they're gonna give you pretty much the same ratings on most of it. Yes, the outer surface may change a little bit. Uh, but again, when did they take the service? If the, if the, Alderman Bassi, you said that, uh, what was it, September is when they gave us the report? So you know that they took that during the summer as far as the counts. So again, you know, do we have true counts of the use of, of that, that street? Or, or possibly other streets, let's say, at, at the other schools? You know, you're always supposed to look at the, the highest impact to, to whatever you're looking at, not, not the least. And, and this just kind of changes the whole perspective of what the report states. Um, I, again, I just would not be, uh, in favor of going forward and spending another fifty thousand. Um, I don't think we need that. I think we need to, to look at it, and maybe we need to have a committee of the whole look at it, or, or a special meeting, uh, to reevaluate, uh, our, our, our streets next year. Uh, Alderman Strack, uh, brought up, uh, how he believes, uh, some of his streets in, uh, in his ward that are in really that bad a shape, that are ready to fall apart. Well, are they all classified for next year, or are they, no? So, are there other streets out there that if we compared them to, are, are not as needed as what you feel that those streets need to be? Now granted, I mean, you know, we can get expertise, uh, you know, information given to us and everything else, but ultimately, it's the seven of us here that make those decisions, and, and have to analyze as far as what's best for the, for the residents of the city of McHenry. Just like I'm doing with, with Kensington right now. That's why I've been out here. And yes, I, I'd like to push it and push it for this year and say, And yes, I'd like to push it and push it for this year and say, I want it in October. But I also want it to be done right and I want it to be done systematically. But I feel that it probably systematically should have been done last year instead of this year or next year. But I'm at least willing to compromise with next year. But let's do it before somebody gets hurt or that part of that road totally falls apart. Somebody brought up the patch idea and they did that. How many years ago was it, Troy? Six, seven?
It was prior to my time as director.
Yeah, a long time ago. They put a big patch in one part of the street. Meanwhile, the rest of the street got worse than what the part that they patched within two to three years. And it hasn't gotten any better. It just keeps getting worse and worse. And that's why I've been pushing so hard for this street. And like I say, it's been seven years that I've been telling the council that this street needs to be done. Thank you.
Alderman Cook?
Do you know the last time? That's a relatively new subdivision, okay? Kensington and all around the high school. When I say relatively, the last 30 years, do you know the last time that road has been done? Or is it the original road that was put in?
I do not know the most recent time that it was done. We have pretty good records going back about 15 years. Prior to that, it would take a little bit of a research project going through old paper records to find it.
Because that would determine, you know, in line as far as repaving. I mean, you know, if it's the original one and there's gonna be that much traffic on it, I guess I would get on it right away too. That's all I have to say.
Alderman Miller?
I guess as the historian, if my memory recollects well, that subdivision was late 70s. Yeah, I was in high school when they were building there. So I doubt that those are the original roads from the 70s.
I would be surprised if it has not been resurfaced since original construction, but I don't know that for a fact.
Is your name Gary? Do you know what last time it was done?
I don't think it's ever been done.
Okay.
That's my recollection. And I moved, I was the first house, the Massey Division, and I moved in in December of 74.
Interesting. Thank you. Alderman Bassi?
Director Strange, I just have a couple of clarifying questions. If we approve to go with the study, when would be the earliest that the road study would be completed?
We would award it in fiscal year 2425. So it would be kind of on the same timeframe as the last time. I believe they drove the roads in June, July, and then we had a final report in September of that year.
September of 25?
Correct. No, 24.
Twenty-four.
So we would have it September of 24. Would it, let's say that Kensington, as many of us know, is one of the worst streets in the entire town. Would that reallocate everything and could Kensington go from 2025 to 24?
Well, we'd really have to talk about what our approach would be because at a certain point, you're gonna have to draw a breaking point between adhering to the old study and using the new study. So the scheduling challenge would be, we like to put the proposed program for the next year in front of council as early as we can in the year because there's a lot of advanced work that we do. We've been doing a lot of work to reduce the amount of concrete subcontracted work that is on that project. So that we, by the time we go out to bid, it is strictly an asphalt resurfacing contract. So right away, after we get a recommendation tonight, we're gonna set about doing all the ADA transition, all the ADA sidewalk ramps on all the approved locations for next year. We're gonna do curb repairs. We're gonna repair storm sores. We're gonna adjust structures. We're gonna do all the ancillary and incidental work that used to just get lumped into the contract. We self-perform that to reduce the amount of subcontracted work in order for the overall program to be more productive. And I think you can see, based upon the history of the last few years, that the program obviously has become more productive because of those methods.
Okay, so the chances of Kensington, if we don't agree to move it to 24 tonight, the chances that Kensington would, at the earliest then, would be 25 where it is right now. Is that correct?
If you don't push it up, if you don't push it up tonight, then the earliest would be 25. And then if we decided to change gears and adhere to a new study, I suppose there could be some risk that everything gets reshuffled and suddenly there's something that becomes worse than that. That is a possibility.
Okay.
And that's why we would have to be cautious about the breaking point between what, you know, which study governs, the old one versus the new one for our planning purposes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alderman Cook, go ahead.
When was the last time you did the study?
2019. We got, we did it.
You think the roads got any better, that you needed another study?
Uh, no, but.
No, because to me, you're throwing $50,000 out the window when it could go into the road, okay?
I think we all agree with that. I think there's just been confusion on some roads being worse than others now and council members trying, how do I say this? Just trying to get certain streets done that is bringing them earlier. So they're not believing the study, okay? And then now they wanna do a new study, so then in three years, four years, we're not gonna believe the study again. So I believe it's wasting $50,000.
Correct.
I agree with that.
Well, I would say this about the study. If we don't do a study, what objective measure do we have to consider and select roads?
You go out there and look at them. I mean, do you do core samples? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you got, you have curb and sidewalk, okay? And usually, that's a pretty darn good base. So all you have to do is go in there, scarify it, and pave over the damn thing. You don't have to, you know, do the core samples or anything else like that. And this is what Kensington is looking like. They put in a real good base. I mean, when you put it in the subdivision, they make doggone sure that, you know, the base is there and all that and the road can hold up. So to me, you know, you said $340,000 on there. And it's probably like the golden rate, just going in there, scraping it, and laying down asphalt. I don't know. I've dealt with roads for a whole long, long time. They don't get better with the last study, you know, to do another study. You look at the road. If the base is good, resurface it. Simple as that. To me it is.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Thanks. Now just to put my two cents in here, all our streets are bad. I've got a couple. I had a lady call me last week. Hey, all these streets are getting redone. When is, you know, when is it our turn? So, you know, I talked to her, I looked it up, and she's due on 2025, North Park Street. And she was very happy. She was, thank you. At least I know it's gonna be done within the next two years. So, you know, we all have roads. Go down, I'm not gonna start the list, but.
Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman McClatchy, you just heard from that resident, okay? And they're getting a road done in 2025. I've been hearing it from my residents for seven years, and finally, this is gonna get done in 2025. So it took how many years? You know, nine years to, for my residents to respond to my residents that the road's getting done? And yours is gonna, sure she's happy because she's bringing it up in 2023 and it's getting done in two years.
I'm sure her road was.
There's people that have brought it up, and nine years later, we're doing it? There's definitely things wrong. There's definitely things wrong with our system.
Alderman, I took a ride on that road and it's horrible. And so is cousin.
I'm not gonna argue.
Well, then.
You took a road. You're right. You saw how bad it was. You told me how bad it was.
Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Thank you. I made the mistake last year of bringing a road up. And, you know, I don't know, I apologize the way I'm gonna say this, but I got shot down. And I get it. I sat, when we did have committee meetings, I was the director of Public Works. And Troy went through this plan and went through this scenario. And we brought it to the council and got this plan approved. We are now investing two certain times. I know we won't guarantee this all the time, but two to $4 million a year on roads. And we are finally gaining. And I have lists that, of roads that I don't even see on this, that I'd love to get done tomorrow. But when I made the commitment five years ago, I guess I hit what maybe you wanna call a speed bump last year where I got pretty much convinced that a road in the ward should have been changed, should have been done instead of a road in my ward because I did a flip-flop just because of the numbers. I didn't ask for more money. And I guess I learned the hard way. But this, this program we're doing right now is a, is a thousand times better than I've ever seen in my 18 years here on the council. Yes, it's getting rated by an outside source. I like that that's happening. And let's face it, you know, when you look at these lists, you see these lower numbers. And there are some low numbers that go into next year, and you can match up a couple lower numbers that are going into 2025. And there's some that I still don't see because I'm hoping that they show up for 2026 or 27. But, you know, there's two new members that hadn't gone through this process from the start. But I do have to commend the Public Works Director and his staff and our committee at the time and what we're able to achieve. And, you know, I don't know, this is one of the best programs in, sorry to say this, in any other departments that, you know, that's, you know, seeing the vision and we're progressing quite well. And it is showing that we're getting an enormous amount of investment in regards to, you know, 2.8 and 2.5 in the next couple of years. And I look forward to be able to continue at that level or higher, if it's at all possible. But, you know, I'm gonna rip it up. I, you know, I could write up my list of a dozen roads that need to get done and they're not even in my ward, but I drive them, so I see it and I feel it. And I understand where you're coming from because it's, there's still some nasty roads. But we're doing a very good job of cleaning this stuff up and we're doing it in, I know it's tough to say it this way, in a quick timeframe because we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot done over these last few years. And people are starting to notice it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna bring up the fact that, yeah, we're doing a great job the last couple of years. Well, you know what? Maybe it should have been started years earlier when I first started complaining about the amount of money that we were having for roads and that we needed to spend more money on roads years before we finally started coming up with a program. And I commend Troy for the fact that he came up with this program. I'm sure you worked with other members of staff to come up with a program that where we now get, what, about $4 million a year constantly into the road program rather than begging and borrowing from the, the, um, general fund. But the thing is, is I've been saying for years that we needed more money. You know, back, who was Leo Pardova that came up with the presentation to say that, you know, oh, well, we need to spend at least 2.1 or 2.2 million dollars, I think, at the time. And I brought up the fact that, yeah, and in seven years, we're right back to where we were. Spend the 2.2 million dollars a year. So that's when I said we needed even more money. And I've been pushing and pushing for more money. And all I'm asking is that these roads are done, that are the most neediest. And I think it needs to be selected locally. Yes, we need expertise. We need expertise to give us that information. But like I said, ultimately, the seven of us are the ones that should be looking and analyzing it and making that decision. Because we're the ones that live here. We're the ones that have been elected to be responsible for those decisions.
Alderman Strack, go ahead.
I'd like to call a question, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I am looking at.
You need a second.
Second. Oh, second on that.
It's a motion to deny.
Motion deny. Alderman Santee?
Second, you need a second on a question.
Yeah, second on a question. Yep. Monty, please call it off.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
No.
Hold on, sorry. Alderwoman Bassi?
No.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Okay, so that item has been denied. Next item on the agenda is 7K, the 2024 Road Resurfacing Program. Looking for a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the plan preparation and publicly bid the 2024 fiscal year 2425 Road Resurfacing Program and if necessary, to solicit proposals for engineering assistance to present to City Council for approval at a later date. Director Strange?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. So following the same routine of last year, we are just working our way down our list. We believe we're gonna have approximately resources of about $2.9 million. So the 2024 program year in green, trusting you've all taken a look at it and reviewed it and understand what we're proposing. And just a couple other things I want you to consider because they're not reflected in the study. We've got a few alleys in town that are pavements to maintain. They were never rated or evaluated as part of the study. At some point, we're gonna have to do those, and those are in pretty poor condition. And then also, we discussed briefly the concept of the next study. So our recommendation will be, and it'll be something that we would recommend as part of next year's budgeting process, would be to go forward with the study in 2024. So we're seeking your concurrence with the 2024 program as recommended or recommendations to adjust as you deem necessary.
Thank you, Troy. Looking for a motion to approve 7K as presented. Alderwoman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve 7K, the 2024 Road Resurfacing Program as presented.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Alderman McClatchy for a second. Discussion by City Council. See none? Open up for public comment regarding this item?
I'm being confused here, but I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
My name's Jerry Leader and I live at 517 Kensington, McHenry. As I shared with you before, I was the first resident in Fox Ridge. And there were no houses south of me, west of me, and nothing around the school there. So I saw the development being done. So I've lived there for 49 years, and that's when that road was done. And over the last couple of years, every winter, that road has continued to deteriorate. And our neighbors have been talking about it. And so the feeling was, based on information from the city, that we would be included in the 2024 program. So as I walked and saw some stuff being last year and then again this year, stuff being done, I saw roads being completed that were in much better shape than Kensington. Now, so do you understand, Kensington is not just for our residents. It's a cut through from people going from Crystal Lake Blacktop to 120, as well as the people in the high school coming and spinning through the neighborhood. If you watch people drive that street today, they weave from one lane to the other lane to avoid the bad path. I would be guilty to say if I did not do that myself. So I got an opportunity today to look at the 10-year road plan. I thought it was very well done, a lot of good information. My concern is regarding our street. And looking at that plan, I appreciate the tough decisions you have to make. As you had a long discussion earlier, Frank and I can remember that happening 35 years ago, but in a more difficult environment. So I am asking today, with due respect, that you find the money or the resources to make sure that Kensington is included in the 2000, 2004 road. Short and sweet?
Short and sweet.
Anybody have a question?
No, we should be good. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Good seeing you again, Frank.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other public comment regarding this item? I'm guessing no. All right. Monty, please call it off.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderwoman Bassi?
No.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
No.
Thank you. That item has passed. Uh, thank you, Jerry, for coming.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. We'll do our best to get to your road as soon as possible, okay?
We really appreciate it and appreciate the work of you folks, too.
Appreciate that. Uh, next item on the agenda is eight A is a lic-, uh, class A liquor license catering endorsements, uh, serving of alcoholic beverages at funeral homes. Uh, Monty, you wanna go ahead and...
Sure. I apologize. I hear your name pronounced Juicen or Justin. I don't wanna upset people when I do their names wrong. Is it Juicen?
Justin.
Justin. Okay. From Justin Funeral Homes was here last year asking about a liquor license, if you remember, or some of you are new. And there was some concern from council that we didn't have an appropriate liquor license that fit his mold, but there was enough concern we didn't have a new license made. Well, and so now, I wanted, we wanted people to be aware. I talked to the chief and the mayor, hey, they can do catering, you know, and so there's cer- I, I make this short. So I tried to put in a, a supplement, class A license holders can be catering, get a catering endorsement to cater places. So, you know, he could have somebody come cater at his event, uh, come cater at his event, at the funeral home, right? And I wanted you to be aware that, hey, you know, some of you were worried that that might not be appropriate, some of you might. And he's been asking too, hey, you know, can we bring up this liquor discussion again? So this is a good chance to not only inform you about the catering deal, if you had questions about that, but for him to give his, you know, so he could give a talk to and, and ask questions of the council about moving forward, how he might be able to get liquor there. So we had this as a discussion item to, to get questions answered or if you had questions or if he had questions to ask you as well.
Thank you, Monty. Appreciate that. And Rob, sorry it took so long. You can come up to the podium and give your spiel. Um, I think we saw it on Channel Five News and all that already. But, uh, but no, I appreciate the delay, just getting the new council in here and getting, uh, the temperature from these new council members. So go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And like, uh, I'm glad to finally, uh, address you guys because last time I, uh, I unfortunately got sick, so I didn't get to address you guys and, and try to answer some questions. My main thing is that more, it, it's kind of started, there's a trend in the funeral industry that more stuff is going towards cremation. So what most people have thought about is, oh, there's a casket, we go to the funeral home, we might bury, and then we'll go to a luncheon somewhere else. Um, we've gone from probably twenty years ago to, we were at like a thirty percent cremation rate to, we're at sixty percent in this area now. And the, and it, it all started on the, the coast and it's kind of moving towards the Midwest. It's ninety percent cremation rate on, on the, you know, east coast and west coast. And when people have just an urn, now it's, okay, well, just do the cremation because I'm gonna go somewhere where I can have food and alcohol and, and, and have, uh, they don't want to have a, a somber funeral. They want to have a celebration. And I'm trying to figure out how to, uh, make use of, of my large facility that I have. And so it's not about competing with the funeral home down the street. It's about making sure that I can offer the people what they want. And so, you know, that, that's, you know, and the, even though the death rate has gone up, you know, the pandemic and other reasons, the number of funeral home rooftops, um, you know, as, as counted across the country from twenty fourteen till now has gone down by thirteen percent. And the main reason for that is, is peop- as people choose cremation and then they say, hey, we don't want something somber, we want to be upbeat. They say, okay, well, if the funeral home can't offer me that, I'm gonna do what's called direct cremation, cremation with no ceremonies. Well, that's a third of the revenue of a traditional funeral. So now, you know, funeral homes are, are pivoting. There's funeral homes, you go down to Florida where the cremation rate's ninety percent and you just drive around and, and you might see one actual standalone building that has a chapel. Most of them are, are storefronts and malls and, and everything like that. And I'm trying to change the perception of what a, a funeral or a celebration can be so, you know, I don't end up being forced in ten years or fifteen years to be a storefront. Because if I, if I don't, if I can't make use of the large facility, then, you know, and people don't want it, then I'm, you know, it doesn't, doesn't make, doesn't make sense for me to continue to have it and, and, and everything. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I totally understand if you guys are, hey, you don't want me to have a, a beer and wine license. Um, but, um, you know, that's why I'm, I'm open to a catering arrangement. That's what a funeral, the funeral home in Wheeling does, is they worked with the, the, um, the village government in Wheeling and, and they have a caterer that is, is involved with any time of a, uh, facility wants, uh, to, or a, a family wants to have, have it. It's not a cash bar where someone can go up and, and buy stuff. The family is saying, hey, we're gonna have a hundred drinks, you know, when they run out. Or, hey, we're gonna have, you know, an open, open bar tab, but there's a certified bartender there to make sure someone doesn't get overserved. Um, I had a, um, young couple that, that lost a one and a half year old a, a couple of weeks ago and, and in lieu of not finding anything that Monty and me could find, um, D.C. Cobb's came in and did, did catering and the, and, you know, everything went fine and, and the, um, the dad came up to me afterwards and he said, you know, it brought me some solace in the fact that I could have a beer in my hand to try to calm me as I'm talking to people about the death of my one and a half year old. And if I wasn't able to do this, I probably would have gone out to my car and took breaks and chugged a beer and I probably would have gotten a lot more drunk. And I, you know, and I sit there and I, and I, I try to draw the hard line. I had a guy that, um, they used our McHenry facility about two months ago and they wanted to bring alcohol in and rent the whole facility. And I said, I told them no at that time because they weren't interested in a caterer or anything like that. And, uh, so I had three people work in that event and we were trying to police it. And by the end of the event, I had people coming up to me. I had one guy, can I leave my black pickup truck in your parking lot? I think I had too much to drink. And I'm like, where the crap is? You know, they're, they're tailgating out in their parking lot and I can only patrol so much. And, uh, another, else and another guy is wandering around with his keys and someone goes and another, another family member takes away, goes, no, no, no. Uncle Bob, I'll drive you home. And I'm, so it's, it's kind of not only trying to monetize my space, my facility, but also try to serve people responsibly because otherwise, you know, how am I supposed to have the staff to monitor the whole parking lot? And, uh, you know, I, I, I've, I've tried to, you know, shut it down and say, hey, guys, if you don't put it away, you know, I got the police station right across the street. And, you know, and they look at me and they're like, sometimes they're like, well, try me. I just saw a cop car drive by. And I'm like, you know, I, I, I feel stupid calling nine-one-one if I can't get someone to comply with me, but, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm, I know there's, there's a lot more crimes and other stuff going on that I'm not, I'm not trying to tax our police department either. You know, if it's a matter of, um, you know, you guys say, hey, we, you can do it, but you need private security or whatever. I'll tell families, hey, that's, that, that, that's the rule. So I'm, I'm open to ideas from you guys.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Um, did anyone have any questions for Rob? Alderman Santi?
Just help me understand this, Rob. Okay, so, so you had this, um, the terrible to say, the, the year and a half of the infant that passed and, and you had the funeral. So D.C. Cobb's came in and catered it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and it, I guess this is a staff question. Everything was, that was done correctly or according to how we could do, yeah, could you explain that?
Okay. So, um, we don't know when people cater events, like they get their catering endorsement and so they can go cater, like, like, um, the Route Thirty-One, the Banquets, I can't think of their name.
Thirty-One North.
Thirty-One North, yeah. So they, they like cater, like they'll do weddings and big events like you'd think of as a caterer. So they get their catering endorsement. We don't, we don't know when they cater. That's just their business, you know? They don't tell us we're gonna go, they don't get, they don't get approval every time they go to cater. They can just do it. But they have, they're supposed to follow certain rules. There's state laws about catering. And so we don't know if they're doing it right or not. There's supposed to be a contract that says, so for example, like you think of catering a wedding. It's twenty bucks a head or whatever it is. You're supposed to have food, food is supposed to be the main catering thing, right? And, and alcohol is supposed to be an extra. And that's kind of what it says in the state law. And that's, our ordinance repeat, is like copies what the state says. But we don't go, I don't go and I don't know where people are catering, so we don't police the catering. But like I talked to a guy from, like, we were concerned, hey, we don't want, we don't want to get people in trouble. We wanna, we want our businesses, we want our businesses and our liquor license holders to not get in trouble. So we're trying to help them. And so, um, I talked to a guy from the local, the, the state liquor commission and he said, yeah, he's like, it doesn't say exactly what it means by more food than liquor, but like you can get in trouble. And he said, you can't just have, you can't go catering and have liquor and say, well, we'll just give everybody a sandwich and call that food and liquor. He's like, it's, it's supposed to be the main thing. And he says, there's no answer. I'm apologizing to lawyers, but you know, they, you know, they all come up with a different idea what it is. But he says, like, if you end up going to court, you're gonna have lawyers arguing about, was that the main thing or not? So it's supposed to be food with liquor on the side. And there's supposed to be a contract written up explaining all of it. So we don't check those contracts. We just, we give them their catering endorsement and...
Okay.
It's nothing we police.
And it's so, it's a one-price catering event with D.C. Cobb's coming in and saying, we're probably gonna have fifty people here.
In, in, in that particular case, the, I led the family work directly with D.C. Cobb's. Um, I know that, I think they got three cases of Miller Lite and, you know, like two cases of High Noon, is what I, what I saw served. And they had a whole bunch of, they brought in, you know, a whole bunch of, uh, appetizers and entrees and, you know, typical like bar food. They bring in big pans. And so, you know, we had food and we had, had alcohol there and it was a five hour, at twelve to five and on a Saturday afternoon, um, is, is what, what they, what they did. So, um, yeah, I, I mean...
Okay. No, I, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. That's all I want.
Rob, I have a question. So is this, is this a revenue stream for you or is it a little bit of both? Is it a revenue stream that you would like to have with this and people choosing your facility over other options?
It's, I mean, if I got nothing off, I mean, obviously, yes, I would like to have some share of, of, of the beer and wine. But if I got nothing off of that, it's a stopgap to get the business back for using my facility. Um, I did, uh, you know, angrily, anytime someone said direct cremation, I said, oh, are you gonna have, you know, any kind of service at a later date? Oh, we're gonna have something on our own. Oh, where, where, you know, what are you thinking? They would name off a couple of bars and, and stuff. And I said, oh, but I have a much bigger space here. Oh, but you don't serve alcohol. And I added all that up and over a three-month period, I probably, I probably lost seventy-five thousand dollars in potential revenue. And frankly, my bank accounts are, 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 are starting to feel it because, you know, that was pretty much given revenue when you had a casket and people were, said, we gotta stay here. We have a casket.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Rob?
The, the only other thing I, I want to add too is, you know, from a, from a state of, state of mind and everything like that, even when I have people with a cremation or a burial for that matter, but mostly, you know, cremation, and they have a service at my place, nine times out of ten, I, I hear them going, oh, we're gonna go down for the after-party at Buddy's or at D.C. Cobb's or wherever. Well, their state of mind hasn't changed in two hours. So, you know, and, and, and that, that sort of thing, they're, they're, they're still experiencing whatever grief they were earlier that day.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Strack, go ahead.
So I guess just to clarify, to council and Monty and Rob, I guess at the same time, what would you like to see? Because it's, it sounds like the catering thing can be a stopgap.
Yep.
And, and is that really what your request of us is, is to help you find a way to connect the catering license to your facility?
If, if, if that is all that is, you guys feel comfortable with, then I, I will take that over nothing. Um, you know, and I will, you know, work with our local businesses. Um, you know, frankly, besides other than D.C. Cobb's, there's a lot of other places that had catering licenses or go, oh, I would, I would like to get one. But they, you know, after the last meeting, they kind of felt some, I think, political pressure that they didn't want to go and either exercise it because they weren't, they, they weren't sure where everyone stood on it. Um, you know...
And Rob, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what your request is, if you're...
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I, I started off like, hey, I was gonna have, you know, a Basset certified bartender and a mobile bar and I was, I was going to, to, to keep it in, in-house. But yes, the catering is a stopgap if I can't get, get that.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, you may have a seat. Um, thank you. So I guess at this point, um, open it up for a discussion by city council, but also, uh, maybe a straw poll of, uh, where you all stand as far as the catering side or liquor license side, uh, to kind of, uh, gauge on where you all stand to bring this forward at a later meeting. So Alderman Strack.
I'd like to get the chief's opinion before we move any further.
Um, so just a couple of things. Um, first of all, our ordinance does not allow alcohol sales within a hundred feet of a funeral home. So if even, even on a catering event, that would not be, that would be against our ordinance. So that, if the council wanted to, we would have to change that moving forward if they decided catering. Um, from a public safety standpoint, we do have a concern with mixing alcohol with funeral homes. Um, but more importantly, I guess, the big concern is if you start to allow other types of businesses alcohol licenses that are not bars, that are not restaurants, then there, it becomes more confusing to say when the next business doesn't get an alcohol license to sell, whether or not it's an auto repair shop. We, we went through this with David two thousand seventeen and we simplified our, our alcohol ordinance for that reason because we started getting very complicated with all the different types and classifications of liquor licenses and who can have what. And right now, although we do have some, some exceptions to the rule that council has created, we have a class A, a class B, and a class C. These are, this is our, our meat and potato. We have full, full bar license, table service, and packaged retail. Um, and we have a couple outliers, which we did with the axe throwing place. We needed to find a place to, to put that in there. And so that's, I would caution council that if, if you go down that path, you will see more people that will apply for liquor licenses that don't necessarily have a bar, don't necessarily have a restaurant that serves alcohol, or sell re- packaged retail liquor. They are a different type of business that wants to enhance their business by selling alcohol. And so that does become, you know, a challenge sometimes to enforce and make sure that everybody's following the rules. Um, but we do experience times of grief, uh, are always heightened during that moment, whether or not it's just a funeral home versus a day or two later, um, during a celebration of life. So we definitely are concerned about people over drinking. And yes, they could go somewhere two hours later, but if there's fifty people at your establishment during the event and then it ends, not all fifty people are gonna go to the bar. A, a percentage of them will potentially if they're having an event. And so we do, we are concerned for that. From a safety standpoint, you know, people have moments of weakness and when they're in grief, extreme grief, that would be a moment of weakness, you know? And we, we kind of, we even conferred with our in-house counselor on that too as well. So from the police standpoint.
The, the one thing that, uh, you know, I, I would add is...
Rob, can you come to the podium if you don't mind? Sorry.
The one thing that I, I just, I, I would add is in, you know, the times that, you know, I've, I've been involved in the business that the police department has had to respond, it's been one of those, those times where I, I was presented with family drama and I knew ahead of time that something was bound to happen. But, you know, neither the, um, sheriff's department or the police department had any additional off-duty manpower available, uh, for me to hire. Um, I'm now at the point where if I get to that, I mean, I'm basically saying, hey, I won't do your funeral without private security if you guys can't calm down at the arrangement table. And I'm not, I, I wouldn't, would, would basically tell them, hey, there's no catering, there's no alcohol, there's no, no nothing. But I can usually see those things coming a, a mile away. There, there hasn't been a time when the police department has responded that we've called and it's not been something that I've not foreseen coming. So that's all I just wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
I have no problem with the, uh, catering at all. To me, it's clean. They come in and they're gone. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Alderwoman Miller?
I'm with the, I'm with the same. I'm much more comfortable with the catering endorsement or use of a caterer versus a liquor license. And it's not about you, Rob. It's, it's about marrying your business with that license and then there is no unmarrying. Um, you know, we give you a liquor license... Um, you know, we give you a liquor license, and six months down the road, you have no death business. That doesn't prevent you from saying, I'm a bar. Um, and, and that's my greatest concern. So, I'm much more comfortable with a catering endorsement or a catering arrangement, cause that's an event-specific. If the family chooses to cater it and chooses to hire a catering package that has beer and wine, using the wedding scenario, I've gone to weddings that have been non-alcoholic and amazing caterers, and I've gone to weddings that have been a shrimp in a peapod and a whole lot of great wine. Um, it, it depends on the caterer and what's the family want. So, I'm more inclined to support a catering process than a full liquor license.
Alderman Strack, go ahead.
Yeah, and to echo Alderman Miller, the last conversation, I was in the same position as well. Rob and I exchanged one email back and forth, and I think, you know, that, that's the difficulty in marrying those two businesses together is where it could go without a lot of control. And I think that was everybody's concern in the last one. I would have to say that the, the catering portion feels more comfortable for me as well, to support that and find a way to make that arrangement. I, I understand the chief's concerns and, and also am, am having that in the back of my head as well. And hopefully, we could find an arrangement that could work to support both of those. Thank you.
All right, any others have any input? Alderman, Alderman Santee?
I'll just, the further side goes would be a catering endorsement. I, I would not, would not, would not allow, or one, one vote, I would not allow for a liquor license.
Thank you. Alderman Glenn?
I, I think I could go either way, but, uh, you know, I, I, I look at, uh, the funeral home as far as the fact that it's their, their facility, they become responsible there. Um, but then, the caterers, um, I don't know, are we a little loose-ended on those caterers? I mean, like Monty was saying, uh, how much, how much control do we have on them as far as liquor?
Well, if a, so, the, the catering, people with the catering endorsement are Class A liquor license holders. Now, if they did something wrong, if they broke a liquor violation, they'd be in a liquor hearing and getting their, getting fined and possibly getting suspended, so we can, we can go after them, but we don't...
We don't know where they're at.
Yeah, I don't...
But it's no different than a bar, Andy, it would be, uh, they're all complaint-driven. It's a little, if they're in our town and there's a problem at the, wherever they're catering, if a complaint's filed and a police car goes there and it involves that caterer's liquor license or the bartender or whatever he is serving, then that would come back to the liquor commissioner, same way as a bar.
Okay.
It's all complaint-driven.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman McClatchy, you were catering. Alderman Bassi?
Either way.
Thank you.
Um, I'm leaning more towards catering, but with the assistance of the chief, um, guiding us through whatever the regulations are.
Thank you. Alderman Cook?
I'd go with catering. Uh, caterers are usually pretty good, and like you said, they have licensed bartenders if they so choose to have alcohol there. And like he said, that, uh, hey, problem is called, police are involved. It's the caterer's fault for, you know, doing that. So, catering is, as far as I'm concerned, is okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, Rob, at this time, so we'll have to bring this back, um, we could add to the next agenda item, just changing the ordinance. Um, like the chief has mentioned, uh, so we'll remove that, um, to make it so you're allowed to bring caterers into your facility. Um, and once again, I think that, you know, hopefully, that helps.
It, it, it helps tremendously, and I, I thank you guys immensely. Um, you know, for what it's worth, um, I know Monty mentioned the, um, caterer's, you know, contract. I'm, I'm glad to, you know, supply if the city wants copies of the contract, you know, full transparency. I'm, I'm glad to help facilitate it, you know.
And I, I think that's a good idea, just for us to kinda check, checks and balances and try to, I know Chief just turned on his lights.
Yeah, I don't necess, I think maybe just upon request. That's how we typically do BACIT certifications and other requirements that are built into all of our liquor license, upon request. And I think it, that would be just fine.
Sounds good.
So, probably good for Rob to know, though, then, once that comes through, as the chief just mentioned, you're gonna wanna make sure you're keeping those for you. The chief doesn't wanna see them daily, but if they request that, it's gonna be from the caterer, but ultimately, it's happening in your facility, so I'm not sure how, we'll have to, we'll have to work through those details.
We can build that right into the language of the catering endorsement. We, um, talked to David earlier, as a home rural municipality, you can build, build out the, the definition of a, of a catering endorsement, so.
Perfect, perfect, great, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I started with their, the Wheeling Funeral Home shared with me their, their catering contract, so.
Perfect.
I have something that I can show the, the caterers to, you know, work with and everything like that, so.
Great. All right, thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. Thank you and good luck. All right. Uh, staff reports, is there any staff reports? None? Uh, canceling July third meeting, uh, I would make sh, I would like to, um, ask the council if we can, uh, cancel the July third meeting, obviously being the day before Fourth of July, if there's any issues with that, please.
So, we're talking about just having one meeting for July?
July seventeenth. Um...
Do you need a motion for that?
No, no, no. Um, and that's it for me, city council comments? Alderman Santee?
Uh, June eighth at three o'clock is the, uh, dedication for the Ed and Joni Bus Street Sign at, uh, Gulfview and John. Drive slowly down John.
Thank you. Any other city council comments? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, we took in, uh, and I called, uh, Dr. Hobson today, and he took care of it, and I appreciate that, uh. We approved, uh, back, uh, in April, a, uh, doing for this weekend, uh, for the flag, uh, ceremony at the park. Uh, we allowed beer and wine as a BYOB, uh, at the park, and the advertising that came out, uh, online, uh, basically just said, bring your own bottle of booze. So, he did call, and I don't know how they will respond, but just so that everybody's aware that we're aware of what, what was advertised, and, uh, they never specifically stated just we're beer and wine. You say, oh, bring your bottle of booze, you know, who's gonna have, uh, a bottle of Southern Comfort in their, their pocket? You don't know. You, okay, here. Chief, there's your first call. Anyway, I just wanted, uh, staff to know, and, uh, again, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hobson's, uh, jump on it right away. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the call. I did reach out and spoke with Terry of, via phone, and then followed that up with an email as well, to clarify, uh, clarifying that. So, if I hear anything back, I'll report that.
Thank you. Alderman Bassi?
I just wanted to thank the chief for, um, you and the other officers that kept us safe during our bike ride last month. Thank you.
Alderman Strack?
Uh, just wanted to mention, I had a revised meeting with our friends with Aqua, and, uh, we have made some headway with them down in McHenry Shores for the water system. Um, and with the chief and deputy chief Walsh's assistance, we met here at, um, the city with residents from McHenry Shores, and had a real nice conversation. We had about ten residents show up for that meeting, and just wanted to thank the chief and, and deputy chief Walsh for attending that with me and kinda working through some details that are going on down there in the neighborhood. So, wanted the rest of council to be aware as well that, that we're making some headway finally with Aqua, so, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Cook?
Um, this goes to, uh, Rob over here. Not Rob, Bill. I had asked, I had, yeah, I'm thinking of you about... Yeah? The list is long as this thing wishes, so. Um, I had talked to you about a couple weeks back about, uh, putting some porta potties over there on East Beach and West Beach over there, and, uh, I know said, you didn't get back to me? Or none of the, none of the porta potties were out there?
Oh, they're out there. They're not, they're not West Beach, uh, East Beach is much more popular as, uh, parking and amenities. Uh, for Memorial Day weekend, like we discussed, uh, was one even asked if it's supposed to be placed out there?
I thought that was more for the, the guys who were working on the road.
No, that was, that was...
Thank you for correcting me on that one. I thought so. But, um, over the Memorial Day weekend, uh, there was a couple of parties out there with their tents and all that, and, uh, I was wondering, maybe we could get a couple of picnic tables out there and a couple of trash cans. And, uh, because they had brought their, their, uh, grill and everything else like that, and I'd love to see in that. I mean, that's something that, uh, can be used in the subdivision and stuff like that, and, uh, a couple of extra trash cans, I'd say, get a porta potty over there, will you please? Because they, they, Parkland has their, uh, uh, kids' fishing club, and it was like, it was like eighteen people there, and I, I'm sorry, eighteen, there was probably about eleven boys and the rest were girls, and they were all out there fishing. So, a porta potty could've been pretty good, so. But I appreciate you putting out that, uh, porta potty over there on East.
Yeah, I, we just, that's been the most pop, always been the most popular one and has more amenities, and so, that's why, uh, just trying to be cost-conscious, we could put one there and help there for our discussion for Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, but you could've called me and told me.
Yeah, that was gonna happen then, it was just gonna happen.
We have to remember his name, though.
Yeah. All right, any other city council comments? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, as long as, uh, the discussion of Lakeland Park beaches are on, uh, uh, discussion on the table right now. I just wanna mention the fact that, uh, you know, I used to do a lot of fishing, uh, harboring my boat out there, uh, at the boat launch and everything else, and, uh, I also remember as a kid, uh, the old Lakeland Park, uh, beach and just how vibrant it was, and, uh, I really don't see that many people using those, those facilities, cause there's nothing there. And, uh, I wonder if, uh, you know, with the aldermen there, that we couldn't come up with some kind of, uh, um, short, long-term, uh, ideas as far as where we could go there, uh, we're talking picnic benches, but what else do we need there? You know, the swings, I think, are in pretty bad shape, uh, I know, uh, I think one of the other alderpeople took and, uh, had mentioned that to me, uh, you know, maybe we just need, I, been a lot, I, the parks in my ward, uh, got one, and, uh, it's got a new, uh, water park, so, I think we need to look at, uh, that ward, uh, as far as their parks is, what needs to be upgraded a little bit, cause they have been neglected for quite a few years. You know, and I know that there's other parks, you know, that we've done.
Yeah, we won't get into a point-by-point for the neighborhood, um, but I will say that we've pulled back from the beach at East Beach. That was a, that was a beach for a long time. Um, we did pull back from that, trying to really direct people to the safest location where we have lifeguards and we have boat rentals, um, and so, we haven't, we, we've pulled the life ring, we had problems with the phone, we have to do the water testing. We've tried to coordinate that all in one spot to keep the safest possible amenities, and so, that, that was our discussion as well. But if there's a directive from council, we can explore something different.
Well, what I'm wondering too is, is, we don't really have a long-term plan for our parks, do we?
We're in the process of a Parks Master Plan right now.
Are we?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause what I was gonna say is, is maybe every alderman wants to contact you as far as certain parks that they feel have been neglected, uh, in their wards, and that, you know, what needs to be done there, and maybe that'll help you develop that, uh, long-term.
Absolutely, and, and the firm, we're using Hitchcock Design Group, and they'll be reaching out to council members. Uh, we literally had to kick off for that last week, uh, week and a half ago, and so, uh, it'll go hand-in-hand with our comp plan, but it's specifically for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We did have one done back in two thousand and six. It was good for approximately five years from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve. Things changed, things haven't changed that much, so we didn't, uh, upgrade, update that master plan. We're at a point now where we feel like we need to really set a roadmap for us moving forward, um, past my, past my tenure and really look at all of our parks again.
Well, we're gonna take a dartboard, and Amir's gonna pick out which park he wants to put a water park into next.
Are you?
Right there?
Huh? No, 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 no. I got some suggestions for you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, uh, Bill.
What's this Hitchcock? What, what, are those the people that we spent three hundred thousand dollars to go along through the whole city to beautify it and all that?
No, Hitchcock Design Group is specifically works on Parks and Recreation Master Plans. Um, they're also, they're a landscape designer, they're, it's pretty all-encompassing. Um, they're an architect as well, and so, um,
Okay.
They actually developed the initial, like, way back when, they, uh, developed this, uh, schematic plan for the Riverwalk. So, that's when we, based on what we have done downtown, they were the ones that really came up with that plan to start off with. So, we have a long history with Hitchcock, um, a firm that I really have a lot of trust in, feel like they're the, the best one to guide us forward.
All right.
One last thing about the parks, um, I believe West Beach is the one we were talking about, was the old Lakeland Park Beach?
East Beach.
Correct.
East Beach.
Oh, is that East Beach?
Yeah.
What's the one further east?
That's West Beach.
Okay. Anyway, what I'm getting at is, uh, we took that old shanty-down garage, uh, several years ago.
Yes, West Beach. That was at West Beach.
Foundation's still in there and everything. Is there any idea of using that, or are we going to eventually get rid of it, or...
For that part, I'm sorry, I didn't, what was the question?
The foundation, isn't there like a...
Yeah, there is. The foundation is still there. It's just a concrete foundation that we left as part of the parking lot. Probably, it's probably the best part of that parking lot, honestly.
I would, well, don't, don't take it anymore away from the street program, please.
Yeah, we'll do that next year.
That parking lot looks like Kensington.
Yeah, we had a neighbor that liked to park the bus there repeatedly that we...
Could, are we, do we have plans to get rid of that concrete, or, or build something else up on it?
At this point, we don't. Again, I, we, I won't do much until we, I mean, we have some plans that are in place, but until we have that master plan that's set for us, again, that roadmap to follow to say, you should add, especially, I, I like it when we can circle and say, here's, you know, Lakeland Park has a playground on the, on the west side of it at Lakeland Park. There's a central one at Altoff, and there's two playgrounds at, at Peterson. So, when you start looking at those circles and how far anybody has to walk to, uh, for a service area for their kids, um, or for amenities, I think those overlapping circles really provide us a, a good roadmap forward, at least from a service area, and where we should add certain amenities, or where we're lacking amenities as a whole, the things that we can add. I can tell you right now, the number-one thing that will come back from the plan, cause it's come back every time, is people want walking trails. They want, where can we implement, uh, opportunities for walking trails? But beyond that, um, it's interesting to see how those studies play out and what, what people do ask for.
Right. All right, thank you.
Alderman Santee?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
Hold on, we got an executive session. All right, so, we're gonna go ahead in the executive session, um...
We need to just a motion, oh, yeah, I guess we do have to. We don't have to, do we, David?
No.
It can just be a motion.
No, Monty's ready, and everybody's seen what he's doing, so.
So, you don't have to go into executive session unless, like, you really wanna look at and discuss the minutes, but, Alderman... Attorney McCarroll and I have looked over the minutes, and we're confident that the executive session minutes are ready to be released, because the properties we talked about purchasing, we've purchased or we haven't purchased, and like, things are settled. There's nothing secret anymore from executive session, we're confident. So, if you trust us, you can just say, pass the resolution, yeah, pass the resolution, and then we can...
No. So, I, I, I'm looking for a motion to pass a resolution approving the destruction of any executive session recordings that exists more than eighteen months, and for the release of certain minutes, and to keep certain minutes confidential. Alderman McClatchy?
That's definitely, I, so, I make motion to, uh, approve thirteen.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Strack?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion by council? Monty?
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Bass.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Santee?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alderman Bassi? Monty?
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy? Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.